Good evening, everybody. Tonight we have a meeting with the Bowie Advisory Planning Board, which is us. And members, Ms. Trass, Mr. Schoetz, Mr. Gallato, Vice Chair Mr. Byrd, Mr. Rogers, and Ms. Avery. Before we get started, just like to read a brief statement. Tonight there are two separate dockets. The first docket will have three motions associated with it. The second docket will have one motion associated with it. Please be mindful that this session is being televised live on local public access television and throughout this building. We will have a fair and respectful proceeding as everyone is entitled to be heard. Comments from the audience that interrupt a speaker who's been recognized or are otherwise out of order are disrespectful and will not be tolerated. Please be mindful of that. Therefore, anyone who is disruptive will be asked to leave and may be escorted out of the building. Each person will be given three minutes to speak. We will have a timer. If there are people signed up to speak, or if there are a lot of people signed up to speak, we may have to continue these dockets till Tuesday, December 13th, which may or may not be the case once I see the list. If there are people watching this in this building that wish to sign up to speak, make sure you sign up on the blue or white list just outside of the room. The white list is for the first three items, and the blue list is to speak on the second docket, item of the departure. Please come to the front of the podium when I call your name. I will announce the name of the speaker who's to be next. That way, we can try to speed things along. So that person hopefully will be ready to come up after that person in front of you is completed. You do have the right to simply mention that you agree with the person in front of you, and we encourage you to do so when the subject matter of your testimony has been adequately addressed by a previous speaker. I thank you all in advance for your cooperation, and at this time, we call first case docket number BD-1-16. Mr. Minor?
Just a clarification, Mr. Chairman. We were going to do the other docket first, the 1602. The BD case would be the second case.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Good evening, Planning Board members. For the record, I'm Joe Minor, the Planning Director for Bowie. I have a few slides here to introduce you to the property that's in question tonight. We have a multiple motion agenda. There are three items: conceptual site plan, preliminary plan of subdivision, and a detailed site plan. These are all for the Bowie Marketplace residential development. The proposal is for 288 multifamily apartments in a four-to-five-story building, including a 475 space parking garage and 16 surface parking spaces. So we'll review that plan. The property is zoned CSC, Commercial Shopping Center, and is about 10.54 acres in size. I wanted to start by just briefly discussing the different applications that are before you tonight, just to orient the board. I mentioned conceptual site plan. That is the first plan that we're going to review. This decision-making matrix gives the board an idea of what will happen with the plan once it leaves here. So the action that's requested of the city is to approve the conceptual site plan. The other option is to disapprove the plan. The Advisor Planning Board, which is represented in this column here, can either accept the staff recommendation. You could reverse it. You could add conditions. You could hold the case for more information or continue the hearing. Likewise, the City Council is holding their hearing on January 3rd next year, and they have the same options, as well as to reverse the staff or reverse the BAPB recommendation. And I would note that the county does not get involved in this conceptual site plan. Neither the County Planning Board nor the County Council will be involved because of the development agreement that exists with the developer and the city. The city has final say on the conceptual site plan approval or disapproval. The second application is a preliminary plan of subdivision. This is a plan that actually has a case number. That's 4-16028. It's actually on a timed schedule, moving through the county's process. The applicant is not prohibited from submitting this preliminary plan, and so it's actually under review at the county now. And the County Planning Board date is scheduled tentatively for January 26th. So here, the recommendation from the city is really just a recommendation. It's either recommending approval or disapproval. The advisory board can accept the staff recommendation, reverse it, or add any conditions. Likewise, the City Council would have a chance to do the same or accept or reverse the BAPB. But what's noteworthy about the preliminary plan is that it ends up with the Prince George's County Planning Board, who makes the final decision. The third plan that's on the agenda tonight is the detailed site plan, and that's actually the plan that will show the footprint of the building, all of the details of how the site will work. Again, the city has control over this because of the development agreement with the developer. If the city does not agree to support the plan, the developer is prohibited from filing the plan at the county for approval. The zoning in this district does require approval of a detailed site plan by the county before permits can be obtained. But like I said, without the development agreement, or with the development agreement, the city has the final authority on that. The board has the opportunity here to accept or reverse the staff recommendations, to add conditions. If you feel more information is needed, you can hold the case or continue the hearing to another date. As the Chair mentioned, the December 13th meeting of the board would be the next regular meeting opportunity if the board felt you needed to continue these hearings for any reason. And I would point out, looking at the County Planning Board, as I mentioned, the county does have the... under the zoning ordinance, the authority to approve the detailed site plan, and that's assuming that the city does support it and it goes forward. But the final decision would be resting on a detailed site plan with the Prince George's County Council, which is called the District Council, if there are appeals taken. So if a party of record is not satisfied with the decision of the planning board, of the County Planning Board, an appeal could be taken to the Prince George's County Council, who would make the final decision on the site plan. The last case is a separate docket that you're going to hear tonight, BD-1, and this concerns the parking departure, which is to reduce the number of parking spaces in the parking garage below what's required by the zoning ordinance, and also to reduce the width of the space from nine-and-a-half feet to nine feet. And that will be coming up next on the agenda. The board does have a big role to play in this type of case. Departure cases have been... the authority has been delegated to the city by Prince George's County, and so the city actually makes the final decision in this type of case. So the board here will get a recommendation from staff. You can accept that or reverse the staff. You could add conditions. And then, your decision, based on the record tonight, will be filed with the City Council. The City Council will have a chance to review your decision, if they want to hold their own hearing and make the final decision, or they could accept your decision. The other option is that a party of record could appeal your decision, one way or the other, to the council, and the City Council would make the final decision in that instance. As I note up here in those final columns, Prince George's County has nothing to do with the departure. It's completely decided by the city. It's what's known as a quasi-judicial hearing. So you're taking evidence tonight on that case and making a decision based on the facts. So I wanted to provide that background because the board really hasn't seen a lot of these applications in the past, and they're kind of unique to this situation. We did agree to process all of these on the same agenda. The applicant requested that. We felt that as long as we had the appropriate information, that we wouldn't have a problem doing that, as long as we had enough time to prepare the reports. And so we are here tonight to present all of this to you. Just a couple of brief orientation slides. This property, as most people know, is located on Maryland Route 450. The Bowie Marketplace Shopping Center just was redeveloped. Stony Brook Drive is to the west. Superior Lane is to the east. This is a zoning map, which shows the property in the CSC zone, which is the Commercial Shopping Center zone. This zone was modified by a legislative bill in 2015, which allowed multifamily units in the commercial zone. And so that's how the applicant is able to proceed with this proposal tonight. Otherwise, no other residential units are permitted in the commercial zone. This is a map of the master plan, showing the Bowie Main Street Activity Center, and there's a dotted line that outlines the parcels that are in the Activity Center. It includes the Bowie High School and Library Site, includes the Bowie Swim and Racket Club. On the north side of 450, Free State Shopping Center, property owned by Park &amp; Planning, and Hilltop Shopping Center. And then the boundary comes down to the south side, includes all of the property on Superior Lane in the commercial area, the Bowie Marketplace itself, Acorn Hill Park, and then Sussex Lane. So this is the area that's identified in the Bowie Master Plan, the 2006 Bowie Master Plan, that's called Bowie Main Street. And you can see by this diagonal hatch, pink and white pattern, that the plan recommended mixed-use development on this property. This is an aerial photograph that just shows the location. It's in the southern end of the Marketplace property. It's basically behind the retail stores that were recently constructed. This is an older aerial, which shows the old Bowie Marketplace and the movie theater buildings, and the houses which are abutting the site on Scarlet Lane. And we did take a measurement just to show how far the closest house was to the old movie theater, and it's about 166 feet. And roughly, the area between the property lines and that building, it's about half that distance. So that just gives you an idea, in case you want to come back later and reference the old photograph. Now, moving to our staff recommendation, we are... one of the things that's an overriding issue or overriding concern is what the City Council has put into the city code regarding traffic impacts on local streets. There's a section of the code that requires any development proposal to be evaluated against levels of service that have been set up in the code. And the levels of service are determined by average daily trips. And so in this chart here, you can see the maximum ADT is average daily traffic, and the thresholds have been set in the city code for various streets. Stony Brook Drive and Superior Lane were the streets that were analyzed by the city. I would point out that we did receive some information from a resident, Mr. Jim Mattson, who did some traffic counts of his own, and he used some computer technology to arrive at the traffic volume standards. He did submit that information at a previous City Council meeting, but he has supplemented that information tonight with a letter and additional counts that he took on October 18th, October 27th, November 3rd, and November 9th. And his point in his transmittal here is that all of the readings that he has taken has exceeded the volumes that were recorded by the city. The city conducted counts during the month of September on four different days at the locations shown in the blue stars. Our level of service information determined that at two of the locations, the volumes would pass the test, even with the proposed development quantities, the retail and the residential. But in two locations, which would be along Superior Lane, here at this location, 3014, and then along Stony Brook at 3018, would fail. And what's noteworthy about this, this is an average of the four days at each location, but what's noteworthy is that those locations that fail, they already fail, even before you add the development traffic in. The point of showing this slide is really to let you know that what the city code says is that if the city's level of service standards are not met, then the planning department's staff cannot recommend approval of any development that doesn't meet the standards. And so here, we're in a predicament because we are not able to recommend approval of any of the applications on the agenda tonight. I wanted to talk about densities, because this is a big issue with respect to the conceptual site plan, especially the first plan that's under review. You have our staff report. There's quite a bit of information in there about the density discussion and what the master plan recommends. The master plan recommends medium-density residential in the Main Street area, and medium-density residential is a maximum of 20 dwelling units per acre. So if you have an undeveloped area, you basically take the acreage of that area. The maximum you can get is 20 units per acre. This proposed development on about five acres has a density of 57 units per acre. So it's well above what the master plan recommends. And even if you were to take the entire Marketplace site, which is 20 acres, and apply that 288 dwelling units to that acreage, you're still at a density of about 14 units per acre. The purpose of showing this slide is to give you an idea of all of the residential densities in some of the major projects in Bowie, including the Bowie Town Center, Pin Oak Village, Fairwood, which is adjacent to the city, Carrington, which is a planned development to the south, and the Melford Village, which is a proposed development. All of those, taking into account all of the acres involved, not just the residential acreage, but the entire site, you can see what the dwelling units per acre are. Our concern with the master plan is that the master plan set a limit for density for the Main Street area. And in addition to that, the county's general plan, which was approved just last year, set ... identified where the densities in the county ought to occur. And the only place in the Bowie area where a high density was recommended was in the Bowie Town Center area, with a density of up to 60 dwelling units per acre. So we felt that there was a real, serious issue with respect to the master plan and what the city has intended for this area. And I wanted to also mention that the master plan has additional guidelines, which should be observed for the Bowie Main Street and any development in the Bowie Main Street area. And I just wanted to mention, from page 16 of our staff report, that staff believes that the proposal does not satisfy the purposes in the zoning ordinance for conceptual site plans. The design guidelines state that the plan should promote the purposes of conceptual site plans, and one of those purposes is to provide development in accordance with the principles for orderly, planned, and efficient and economical development contained in the general plan, master plan, or other approved plan. So we felt that this CSP does not promote the principles of the master plan because it proposes a residential land use that does not conform to the master plan recommendations for medium density. In addition, it does not create a safe, attractive street scape, reduce traffic conflicts, provide multimodal options, or enhance pedestrian connectivity. And these are all guidelines contained in the Bowie Master Plan for the Main Street area. In addition, the proposed site plan does not ensure that the buildings are appropriately sized for the site, conform to the proposed land use density, and support the character envisioned for the area. Nor does the proposed plan ensure that the apartment building will not adversely impact the character of the existing residential neighborhoods. That's another policy of the master plan. The proposed conceptual site plan does not provide a transition in building density and intensity from the more intense uses located at the core of the Bowie Main Street along Maryland Route 450 to less intense uses along the edge, adjacent to residential neighborhoods. And that's on pages 24 and 25 of the master plan. Also, we raised questions in the staff report about the ability of the site plan, the CSP, to conform to the zoning ordinance site design standards. In particular, we felt that there would be circulation issues related to the CSP within the rear of the retail center. You have conflicting areas of conflicting vehicle movements behind the existing resident or behind the existing retail. This is the main access to the parking garage. Here's the entrance to the parking garage. Most of the traffic is intended to come from Sage Lane. There would be a three-way intersection here where you have the Bowie Community Center. You also have a chain tire and auto use right here. So we found that there are a lot of conflicts with the workability of this CSP with respect to circulation patterns, as well as pedestrian access. There was really no addressing of lighting, and we felt that the public space system needed to be enhanced to provide better connections. The other item that was cited in our report about the conceptual site plan is that the development agreement actually required a minimum of 20% of senior age-restricted units in the residential development. And we really received no information about how that was going to be integrated into this project. So although the development agreement that the city has indicates that the city would support residential land use on this property, staff finds that there are too many reasons why we cannot recommend approval. The second part of this request is the preliminary plan.[1185.83][1185.83](Applause). The second part of this request is the preliminary plan of subdivision. And I mentioned that this is the plan that the County Planning Board has tentatively scheduled for the 26th of January. It's a plan that the city does not have approval or disapproval authority over. We can only recommend. And a couple of the things that you look for in a preliminary plan of subdivision is really for adequate public facilities, which would include schools and roads, water and sewer, all of those facilities that would be needed to support the proposed development. This preliminary plan of subdivision, what it does is it creates a new lot line, which follows... basically cuts the property in half. And if you follow my pointer up here, it basically creates this 10.5-acre parcel in the southern end of the property, which includes about 100,000 square feet of the retail that's existing, as well as the residential proposal right here. Again, it's 288 new residential units being proposed. In terms of school facilities, and I think the board is a little familiar with how the county does this, they will review a preliminary plan against the school cluster capacities. And so the county has divided or aggregated schools under the cluster regime, so that there are multiple elementary schools, multiple middle schools, multiple high schools into one cluster zone. And the capacity test is based on the capacity of the cluster as a whole. What we did was we took the trip generation factors times the 288 units, and we found that, just looking at the Bowie schools and the capacity that's available at the Bowie schools, at elementary, you would have 84% of capacity. Middle school, you would have 84%. And high school would be 87%. But again, the test is being done by the county at the entire cluster level, so there's a lot more capacity existing in the network within the cluster. And so the elementary schools actually, within the cluster, is 82%. Middle school is 81%. And high school is 85%. And I used the 2015 enrollment numbers, because the 2016 enrollment numbers, even though they've taken the enrollments at the end of September, they haven't published the data. So we'll follow up when we get the data to double-check, but according to the county's own guidelines, there's not an issue with respect to school capacity if you do it at the cluster level. The other thing to note is that the county charges a school facility surcharge of $15,628 per dwelling unit. So every dwelling unit that is a non-senior unit must pay this amount of money to the county, and it's really to create new seats of capacity within the system. So this development would pay a sizable amount of money. We figured if you did not count the senior units, which are exempt, the county would be collecting about $3.6 million, $3.6 million, through the school facility surcharge. So staff found that the adequate public facilities test for schools is met in this case. Regarding traffic impacts, the County Planning Board actually had published guidelines for assessing traffic impacts of development proposals at the time of preliminary plan. Traffic study was submitted in accordance with those guidelines. And really, the focus is on the intersections, the signalized intersections, to make sure that there's capacity to handle all the turning movements. And the applicant's traffic study identified that there are no failing intersections with respect to the capacity. The only problem that existed was at the corner of Superior Lane and Stony Brook, where there was a delay threshold. If you have to wait a certain amount of time, I believe it's 50 seconds or more, then it's considered unacceptable from a threshold standpoint. But the county has actually adopted additional standards for local streets, similar to what the city did, but not as detailed. And doing the more detailed analysis, the county or the applicant found that the traffic conditions do meet the county's additional standard. They recommend in their staff report, and the county has normally adopted this practice, of adopting a cap of trips on a proposal, so that if the trip cap, the vehicle trip cap, is exceeded in the future, that they'll have to come back for additional review. And so what we recommend in our staff report on page 19 is that although the planning staff here is unable to recommend approval, as I've described, because of the city code restrictions on us, if the planning board here, or the City Council, is inclined to recommend approval of the plan, that we would recommend a condition that establishes the trip cap of 243 a.m. peak hour trips and 533 p.m. peak hour trips for this project, so that we would... if there was any additional changes, that we would be able to see those coming back through. The third thing I wanted to mention about the preliminary plan of subdivision is about the master plan. And again, you hear a lot of times that the master plan is just a guide, a guideline. But actually, the courts have decided that when your ordinances actually speak to the master plan specifically about a specific requirement, that it actually has the force of law. In the subdivision regulations for Prince George's County, it does say that a preliminary plan shall conform to the area master plan, including the maps and the text. But it goes on to say that unless the planning board finds that the events have occurred to render those recommendations no longer appropriate, or the District Council has not implemented the recommended zoning. And in this case, the property has not been rezoned. It still is CSC. So there is a dilemma in that we know what the master plan says with respect to density, and I've covered that earlier when I talked about the conceptual site plan. But here, this is the time where the master plan recommendations should be addressed. But because the density issue has not... because the county did not rezone the property, the density issue is not on the table. So we really focused on the density issue in the conceptual site plan, because we feel it's really relevant to the City Council and how they decide. It's really a discretionary decision on the conceptual site plan. But what we found here with respect to the master plan finding is that there are a lot of policies and strategies that are spoken to in the master plan that affect how properties get developed. And when you look at the preliminary plan, you're not seeing a site plan. You're seeing basically the outline of the southern portion of the property. And our view of this is that because those master plan recommendations are so important that... and you can't address them now, because as part of this plan, there's not a site plan on the table to review, staff recommends that if the board is inclined to approve the preliminary plan, that a condition be added that will require the applicant at the detailed site plan stage to address the requirements of the master plan. And some of those requirements relate to providing pedestrian connections through the property, providing a network of civic and public spaces, street crossings marked by special materials, curb bumpouts, or other safe crossing measures at intersections, using the highest quality of urban design that creates a consistent build-to line that frames the streets and provides a comfortable sense of enclosure for pedestrians, provides street scape amenities such as street trees, wide sidewalks accented with paving materials, trash receptacles, bike racks, ensuring that buildings are appropriately sized for the site and support the character envisioned for the area, using high-quality, durable, and attractive materials with appropriate pedestrian-scale architectural detailing and design of all buildings, providing high-quality signage compatible with its use and purpose, and exploring the feasibility of a public art program to provide fountains, statues, sculptures, sidewalk medallion insets, and other features to highlight the special nature of the Main Street area. Further, that development will not adversely impact the character of existing neighborhoods. That is a policy that's in the master plan. And then the last item was to show that a transition in building density and intensity from the more intense uses located at the core of Bowie Main Street along Route 450 to the less intense uses along the edge, adjacent to residential neighborhoods. So we're recommending, as I said, if the board is inclined to approve the preliminary plan, that these be made conditions of the detailed site plan, because we feel that the detailed site plan is the only way you're going to see the amount of detail necessary to determine whether these master plan requirements can be conformed with. So to summarize, staff... although the development agreement, again, allows residential use to be considered, we can't recommend, as planning staff, approval because of the traffic issue, the city code requirements. But we're recommending, in the event a recommendation of approval comes out of the board, that you apply the trip cap that I mentioned, as well as the master plan. as well as the master plan, uh, policies and, and strategies as conditions of detailed site plan. So, the third part of this application is the detailed site plan, and this is, this is the foot, the footprint of the building, as I mentioned. It's, um, showing you the landscaping, the buffering. Um, what we also have here is some of the elevations, and I'm sure the developer will talk more about this later, but it gives you an idea of the size and scale of the building. Um, so, the detailed site plan, the, the interesting thing about this is that the county's criteria for approval are very minimal. The, the site, the zoning ordinance contains site design guidelines which have to be, uh, addressed in the design of the site, but basically, the applicant has the test of showing that what they're proposing is a reasonable alternative to satisfying the site design guidelines. So, in looking at this site plan, uh, staff conducted a very detailed review. There are multiple pages involved in the, in the, in the, in the package of drawings. Um, we analyzed a number of things, including the setbacks of the building, um, looking at lighting, looking at onsite site, uh, signage, architecture, building materials, um, and then basically coming back to conformance with the area master plan. And our report assumes that a condition of approval is adopted that requires those items that I mentioned previously to be addressed as part of this detailed site plan review. And our conclusion is basically that these particular requirements of the master plan, including, uh, that the development will not adversely impact the character of existing neighborhoods, and that there should be a transition in building density, uh, these have not been met, in our opinion. Um, so, staff found... (applause) Again, again, even though, uh, the development agreement allows residential use to be considered, we're, our hands are tied, again, with the respect, with respect to the traffic, um, and, but we find that the proposed detailed site plan does not represent a reasonable alternative for satisfying the site design guidelines for the following reasons. The scale and mass and height of the proposed building is out of character with the adjacent residential neighborhood. The development of the proposed apartment building does not allow for a gradual transition from the more intense uses existing on the site along Route four fifty to the less intense uses existing in the adjacent residential neighborhoods. The proposed building does not meet the required rear yard building setback. There is a setback that's required based on the height of the building. The height of the building is fifty-four feet. Uh, setback of forty-three feet is required. They've only provided forty-one and a half feet, so they don't meet that requirement. Also, two requests have been filed for alternative compliance, which is, is an option under the landscaping requirements to provide, um, an alternative to what the code requires, but to basically satisfy the intent of the code. Um, those requirements, um, exist over in this end of the site where they were looking, the applicant was looking to reduce the width of the landscape, landscape strip from twenty feet to about thirteen feet, and then along the rear of the property to reduce the width of the landscape strip as well. Staff concluded that these requests are self-created situations driven by the need for a large and extensive building footprint for the multifamily building, and, and we did not support the alternative compliance request. A couple other reasons for not supporting the detailed site plan, staff found that the proposal does not in, conform to the general purposes of the detailed site plan, which again, go back to citing the master plan and, um, how site plan should reflect conformance with the master plan. Also, the detailed site plan does not conform to all of the zoning ordinance site design guidelines, and I, I would refer you to that section of the report where we've gone item by item. Uh, finally, uh, we also felt that the site plan does not conform to all of the master plan policies and design guidelines, uh, for Bowie Main Street. So, we felt for all those reasons that we, uh, had to recommend disapproval of the detailed site plan. So, that concludes my overview of the, uh, the three applications, and as I said, there are three motions you'll need to make. Um, our staff recommendation is summarized on page thirty-eight of the staff report, and, um, I could answer any questions or maybe hold those that, uh, allow the applicant to present.
Joe, I got one. If the conceptual site plan itself is disapproved, um, then the preliminary and detailed...
(inaudible).
There you go, sorry. Is that better?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, Joe, if the conceptual site plan is disapproved, um, doesn't that really make preliminary and the detailed a moot thing?
Well, as I said, the preliminary plan is, they're not, they're not prevented from filing that and processing it.
Correct.
So, they could process it through the county. The county could approve it, but it's subject to getting a detailed site plan approved subsequent to that. So, if there is no approval of the conceptual site plan, they won't be able to submit a detailed site plan either. So, so they could move forward, but they're not going to get anywhere, basically.
That's what I'm saying. I mean, it's, you know, conceptually, obviously, it doesn't look like there's too much favorable, uh, sentiment out in the community. Um, and just wondering, you know, all three, I can understand why they presented all three at one time because if...
(inaudible).
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Um, so I got the water here. My, my, my voice has been going hoarse. Um, I was saying is that, you know, I can understand why the applicant has proposed all three at one time. Obviously, if the conceptual is, um, you know, is not approved, obviously, it really kind of throws the whole strategy, um, for the other two plans. And, um, you know, I can understand why they've done that, and I applaud them for, for doing it, but that's basically, I'm just, you know, confirming observations, that's all.
That's correct. Okay, if there are no other questions, I'll, uh, turn it over to the applicant to make their presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Minor. (applause) If at this time, the applicant, please, come to the front. Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, and, uh, members of the board. For the record, Andre Gingles, I'm an attorney with law offices, and Laurel Merlin will be representing the applicant in this case. Um, I'm going to start off with just a couple of minor items, and then I'd like to have Mr. Berman, uh, who's here, sort of take you through a presentation, and then I'm going to come back and specifically address all of the issues that were raised in the staff report. Um, so, as Mr. Minor noted, the, the applicant's essentially proposed, uh, a development proposal. Uh, he also noted that there was a development agreement reached by the applicant in the city, and this proposal is consistent and conforms to that development agreement. Um, subsequent to that development agreement, there was actually an amendment that we explained to the city needed to be done to the Prince George's County zoning ordinance, and that, uh, text amendment, uh, was supported by the city, and it's essentially that text amendment in this development agreement, uh, for which this development proposal exists and, in fact, conforms to. Um, that subsequent, that legislation, uh, which amended the Prince George's County zoning ordinance, contemplated this specific building in this specific location in this scale and in this size, and I'll talk a little bit more about that in some detail, uh, but I do want to have Mr. Berman first make a brief presentation about the proposal, and then, again, I'll come back and direct, uh, address my comments mainly to the issues raised in all three of the staff reports.
Mr. Chairman and, uh, members of the board, for the record, Brian Berman with Berman Enterprises. Thank you, uh, for having me tonight. Just like to do a brief presentation, um, to go through some historical dates, um, and, um, lead to where we are today. The first slide takes us back to two thousand and thirteen. It provides, uh, the major dates that I'd just like to quickly read through. Uh, we purchased the property on June sixth, two thousand and thirteen, and very shortly thereafter, on the thirteenth, we were met with city officials. They reached out to us. The city wanted to know our plans for development, and we informed them that there were no plans for the immediate redevelopment. We gave them three major reasons why that was the case. The first being that there was no, uh, anchor for the retail, the second being that there were still in existence several tenants that had the property tied up for a long time, one of them being Rite Aid, if folks remember, and the third was that, uh, we had other major developments in the community. Our family's been developing for a long time in Prince George's County, and we'd like to give our full attention. On the twenty-first, we met with the city staff and the mayor, and we were informed that the city wanted immediate redevelopment, that this was a blight on the community, that it was something that, uh, they wanted us to make a priority. Well, we told them that in order to do that, we would have to attract a, a major anchor retailer, and we'd have to come up with a plan, so we were charged with doing that, and we worked, uh, very strongly to try to bring back Safeway, actually, and we had a progress meeting with city staff on September the thirtieth and on October, uh, twenty-third, two thousand and thirteen. In those meetings, we, uh, presented to the city staff the, uh, plan for development which would include, um, retail shopping center and the multifamily building. On July the first of two thousand and thirteen, we did a formal presentation to the city on a possible redevelopment scenario involving a complete demolition, attracting the retail anchor we had in mind, again, at the time it was Safeway, and multifamily residential. That, the image, um, that we presented was, uh, this next slide, which, uh, more or less shows the development plan of the prior developer. This, uh, property unfortunately had been owned by multiple developers who had failed to execute their plan. Uh, we at the time had not, uh, had, um, the folks on board to draw up our own plan, but this was the plan that, uh, we thought would work, again, with Safeway being the targeted, um, anchor. So, and I reason why I point that out is that the residential development in the density actually in significantly higher density than we're currently proposing was always a part of the plan. It was always presented as such, and, uh, it's important for me just to, to make that point way back in two thousand and thirteen. In, uh, two thousand and fourteen, we, uh, we had a press release in coordination with the city council and staff. Um, by this time, unfortunately, Safeway had, uh, jettisoned. They were, were bought out and decided, uh, that they wanted to kill all deals in, in motion, and we had, uh, basically given up, and the city gave us a push again, and so we reached out to another anchor, Harris Teeter, who's now our, our anchor tenant, and we worked very hard to convince them to, uh, to start opening up stores in Prince George's County and on, uh, but in order to do that, it was a very difficult deal. Uh, they were involved in all elements of the development, including the residential, where it would go, the densities, and we worked with the city on an economic development incentive package, um, that we presented before the city on November the seventeenth, two thousand and fourteen, just about two years ago, showing a redevelopment plan with three hundred and fifty dwelling units on apartment building in the exact same location, uh, which was unanimously approved. On, uh, November the twentieth, two thousand and fourteen, we signed the incentive package, uh, with exhibit A that showed the residential conceptual site plan attached, again, in that very location. So, here is the press release image, and again, these were all different images that we were going through, different designs. Here is the image, uh, from the city council presentation, and, and again, now it had been, uh, no longer Safeway, now Harris Teeter as the anchor. And, uh, this was the actual exhibit that was attached to the economic development incentive plan, so it's not merely that residential was, uh, contemplated for the rear, and in fact, there is no other residential use. We can't do townhomes or single-family homes, we're not allowed to. So, uh, so multifamily was always a part of the plan. Uh, again, at the time, there was a, a blight and an eyesore on the property, and so, other than a, a few community members, we really didn't hear much of complaints regarding our plans because it was going to remove something that I think unanimously was considered to be something very bad for the community. In two thousand and fifteen, uh, we had a, a major vote in front of the city council. We needed an actual text amendment, an amendment to the legislation at the Prince George's County level. This is the type of thing that developers loathe to do because they are really, really disliked, uh, amongst the Prince George's County council members. We, uh, obviously needed to do it because in order to expedite the process of actually developing the residential, uh, rather than going through the, the, the process of changing the zoning, this was the only way to do it in an expeditious fashion. So, on, on, uh, May eighteen, two thousand and fifteen, we did a presentation to the city council for vote. On a zoning text amendment for residential proposed, in that presentation, we once again showed the same three hundred and fifty dwelling unit multifamily apartment building. That presentation was unanimously approved, and I'm not saying that the three hundred and fifty unit dwelling unit multifamily building was unanimously approved. The motion for the text amendment was unanimously, unanimously approved. Um, on, on May twenty-sixth, two thousand and fifteen, we, uh, received a letter from the mayor and the city council in support of the multifamily housing, specifically multifamily housing. And on, uh, September thirtieth of two thousand and fifteen and November third of two thousand and fifteen, Prince George's County held zoning hearings where, uh, this text amendment was heard, and we had unanimous approval of that. Um, this is the image from the city council presentation for the vote on the text amendment, once again unanimously approved, showing, uh, a much higher density building with two parking garages, with all of the facade of the building abutting, uh, the single-family dwelling units. This is, um, this is some internal revisions that we internally did to try to break up the building along the property line after hearing back from some community members about the monolithic, uh, face of the building and how that was of concern. So, we did some internal revisions, uh, with our architect, Lassard. Uh, here's another revision that was done, contemplating a possible, uh, uh, building that would have only one garage and would break up along the rear so as to, to change the view shed and provide, uh, more of a buffer. And then in two thousand and sixteen, on, uh, March seventh of two thousand and sixteen, we did a presentation to the city council on residential, on the residential plan. On March eighth of two thousand and sixteen, the first stakeholders' meeting regarding the residential plan was, uh, held, and there were many issues raised, including transparency, quality, safety, property values, uh, schools, parking, traffic, and height density. Um, the follow-up second stakeholders' meeting was held to address these issues, and that was on April the fourteenth of two thousand and sixteen, and the result of that was us going through systematically each of the concerns, and the biggest change to the plan that was made was, um, a three hundred and fifty dwelling unit building went down to three hundred and ultimately now to, uh, approximately two ninety. There was a reduction in height and density. What went from a five-story pitched roof building went to a four-story building along where the residences are with a flat roof, uh, and a, and a five-story, and a five-story building behind that closer to the retail. Um, here are the images of the residential, uh, along with the retail that was, um, part and parcel of the, uh, city council presentations in the first stakeholders' meeting on the seventh and eighth of March, and this is, again, the same, um, same image at the second stakeholders' meeting, but we also, uh, displayed some, um, graphical images that showed the impact of the reduction in density, and I have those copied here. They're also, of course, on the record from that stakeholders' meeting. We identified the specific, uh, homes that were impacted, um, by the, by the development, by doing a view shed, a study, and, um, the specific homes within that group, the subset that were, were the most impacted, which was, uh, eight or nine homes. The, um, oh, this is an image of some of the locations of where we took those image shots from, as well as, of course, an old aerial of the old Bowie marketplace. Um, here was the originally proposed five-story pitched roof kind of, uh, design, and then after this, the stakeholders' meeting and, and hearing back from the concerns of the community, uh, the reduction and, uh, what that looks like. So, dropping the five down the floor. (laughter) And then from, from Sage Lane, similar type of, of view shed study with the five stories and the pitched roof, down to the, uh, four stories, uh, up against, uh, Sage Lane. So, um, this is the same, this is actually from the road, from where the single-family homes are. This is the initial proposal, and then the reduced proposal there. So, um, basically, this is a transition. This has been a process. It's been, um, uh, something I've been proud of to work with, uh, with the community. We had a, a very large, uh, indoor mall that could have otherwise been repurposed as, to other things, but, uh, we worked together to come up with a plan that, uh, that, uh, what ended up becoming a part of a development agreement, as well as our internal plans for moving forward. And, you know, today, of course, the mall is long gone, but we remember it, and it was a, a very big part of, um, what was there was a very big motivation for the city to try to get us together with them to move forward with this plan, and I just, you know, the main point I want to bring out is that the residential that we're proposing, um, has been a part of this plan from the very beginning, and, um, the community and the city have been involved in those, in those hearings. There have just been very, very many of them. So, uh, that concludes mine. Andre, if you want to... Andre, if you want to...
So, again, back on the record, Andre Engels. So, the, the main thing I want to do is now address the issues that were raised in the staff report. And essentially, if we narrow down most of what was in the staff report, there are two findings in particular that are the premise of the recommendations of disapproval. And they are that all three plans, to some extent, do not propose a density that conforms to the specific design guidelines that are in the Bowie master plan, nor that they conform to some city policy regarding where what is considered by the staff report higher density is allowed to be developed. And then, second, that we don't conform to the requirements in the city code, the section that deals with excessive traffic as a result of new development. And what that section actually says is that the staff cannot recommend approval when any development, when added, any development, when added to existing traffic levels will then result in a deterioration of the traffic conditions on any such street below the level, level of Service C. I just, and I'll come back to that, but, and I'll restate it when I come back, but we actually do not think that that's what this does here and that we live within what is the express statutory construction of that language. So, first, I have to turn back to the development agreement. We had a meeting prior to the filing of the applications, and at that meeting, we indicated that we were planning to file two applications. Actually, three. We haven't discussed the departures yet. But essentially, we were going to file two applications, preliminary plan and subdivision and a detailed site plan. We were pressed by the city staff who viewed at the development agreement that we should file a conceptual site plan. First, I would note that there is nothing in the development agreement that mandates that we get an approval of a conceptual site plan. When that development agreement was done, it was done before the modification to the zoning ordinance. It was done with the contemplation that a number of mixed-use zones do require conceptual site plans, preliminary plans of subdivision, and detailed site plans. In fact, the zoning text amendment that was supported by the city, which was adopted by the council, specifically only requires that there be a detailed site plan. The development agreement requires that any residential construction on the property be consistent with the zoning ordinance. So, it's the zoning ordinance that specifically says, as a result, again, of the text amendment, that all that's necessary in this instance is a detailed site plan. And not related to this, we have to do a preliminary plan and subdivision anyway. Additionally, and Mr. Berman pointed this out, but the development agreement in every hearing that we've been in, in discussions that we've had about doing the text amendment, we've always shown that development agreement, which has a proposal for the residential in the specific location and that it exists now on our proposed plans. And the main difference that has occurred since the first time when it wasn't our development proposal to when it now has become fully the Berman development proposal is simply a reduction in the size and the scale of the building. It's the primary difference that has occurred over all those times. The zoning ordinance essentially says, different, and there are sections in the zoning ordinance that do allow multifamily development in commercial shopping center zones. That section of the ordinance was not amended. In fact, what was done here was to amend the zoning ordinance to allow for a multifamily project. It does not have density associated with it. The regulations within the zoning ordinance that guide density regulations were not made applicable to this property and were not a part of that text amendment. And that, in effect, is what allows us to move forward with the development that was consistent with the development agreement that was entered into by the developer and the city. This was done essentially because, and the only, there's two other requirements in that text amendment. One is, is that the properties, and there are three properties that this is applicable to, be in an area in which they're recommended as mixed-use activity center, and this property is within there. And then, second, that it receive approval of a DSP. Because of the existing development agreement, that DSP, the developer and the city have agreed that that DSP needs to be first approved by the city. And that's the reason for the filing of this application. However, a conceptual site plan is only required if it's required by the zoning ordinance. I think that's important because of a lot of things that are in the staff's recommendation with regard to the conceptual site plan. Even if there were a conceptual site plan required, what the staff essentially does is discuss the purposes of a conceptual site plan. However, it's not the purposes of a conceptual site plan that are the criteria for approval. There is specific statutory language in the zoning ordinance which we are required to be consistent with or conform to with regard to a conceptual site plan. And these are the findings and the criteria we must meet as opposed to the litany of purposes that the staff describes in their staff report. As, as, as a result of that, it would be our view that, first, the conceptual site plan is not needed. And, second, even if it were to be taken into consideration, the purposes that are raised by the staff are not the criteria for the approval of a conceptual site plan. As Mr. Berman noted, and I've noted, the residential was, was supported by the city because it affected various properties along that area. It created a multifamily project as opposed to just saying multifamily dwellings could exist within there. And what staff does is place a great deal of reliance on the 2006 master plan. And while there is some relevance to the plan, that's a plan that's approximately 10 years old. We think that the discussions and the meetings that have occurred, which resulted in the development agreement, are essentially the effectuation of what the, what the city believed to be the policy, and that the policy to be followed by this developer with regard to that residential proposal. So, essentially, we, we think that there should be, and as a result of that being a more recent document, there should be greater reliance on that document. As I noted, the guidelines are 10 years old. The guidelines, and one of the reasons that we do not, in staff's view, conform to those guidelines are, the guidelines were actually written to the extent that buildings would be placed, residential buildings would be placed up on Route 450. Well, when the development agreement was done with the city, at that time, the city specifically allowed and wanted the developer to go forward with the shopping center, saw the plans where they were going to be parking out in front, and that, in fact, the building was not going to be placed up on 450. So, to subsequently come back and try and make us adhere to a set of guidelines that even in the approval of the development agreement were not taken into consideration by the city seems very unfair to the developer, particularly because everyone was aware of exactly where the building was proposed to be placed. Again, I would note that that development agreement is much more reflective of where the policy is. And in fact, the subdivision ordinance, so the second application that we have is a preliminary plan and subdivision. And the subdivision ordinance, and Mr. Minner cited this, does require, in just about all instances, that a preliminary plan and subdivision conform to the master plan. And it cites a couple of instances where it doesn't have to. In the instance where the zoning that's discussed in there has not been put forward, and in this instance, the zoning that was talked about was to rezone these properties to some sort of mixed-use zone, and that has not gone forward. Or, if there were events that have occurred to render the relevant recommendations no longer appropriate. If there were events that have occurred to render those relevant recommendations no longer appropriate. We would submit to you that the discussions that have been had over the past few years with regard to redeveloping that shopping center, the presentation of a consistent concept that showed a building not to be placed up on Route 450, but to be placed in the location that we show it in the detailed site plan and that we propose it on the preliminary plan and subdivision, along with the agreement that we went into with the city, with the other proposal being that we make sure that 20%, and there's been discussion with the city about how to achieve that 20% in terms of senior units, that those are, in fact, the types of events that have occurred to render those 10-year-old recommendations of the master plan no longer relevant. In this instance, the district council supported the cities as a result of the city's desire to have that text amendment. And if you look at that zoning, excuse me, that text amendment that was approved, and you looked at the zoning ordinance as it exists now with that, again, there's three issues. It's that the property be within an area that's designated in the master plan as a mixed-use activity center. We are one of three properties. That there be a detailed site plan approved. This is the proposal that we have before you today. And lastly, that, that be a multifamily project. And what we have proposed is a back-up multifamily project. Mr. Berman mentioned that there's no other residential that can go. It doesn't allow townhouse development. It specifically proposes that this be a multifamily project in that instance. And so, again, it would be our view that this is a particular instance where the master plan guidelines and those texts should not be relevant and that the more recent adoption of essentially a policy document with regard to the development of this property be the relevant set of circumstances that are to apply to this development. We've had some discussions with staff about what is termed medium density because of what is in the existing master plan about medium density. I would note that the development agreement actually talks in terms of 20 acres. So, the applications before you, particularly with regard to the detail, the two relevant applications, the preliminary plan and subdivision and the detailed site plan, actually look at the parcel in which the development's going to occur. And that's about a 10-acre parcel. So, residential density in terms of mixed-use activity centers is either low, medium, or high. And in fact, some of it might be super-high. But essentially, when you look at mixed use in the zoning ordinance, it allows a floor-area ratio development of .4 up to 8.0. So, the low end is .4, the high end is 8.0. In this particular instance, when you look at the development that's proposed to occur on parcel X12, it's slightly over 1. It's 1.1 or so. And we would submit to you, with the intent of the master plan being, that these properties be developed as mixed-use activity centers, that a .4 on the low range and a .8, excuse me, and an 8.0 on the upper end, that our 1.1 is certainly medium density. Staff has looked at density in the sense of a Euclidean version to a great extent in terms, and in a Euclidean zone, you sort of look at the acreage, and then you look at the zoning ordinance and how many dwelling units are allowed per acre. In mixed use, the way mixed use is done, it is really generally done based on floor-area ratios. And again, we would submit that the 1.01 is well toward the lower scale when the range is basically .4 up to 8.0. Essentially, a detailed site plan does require that you provide a reasonable alternative for satisfying site design guidelines. And it's very broad because site design guidelines are meant to bring forward a high-quality development. And that's everything from materials to placement of buildings, textures, landscaping, and things like that. We note that there were a variety of issues raised with two of what I would call the modifications to this application. There was a suggestion that there was a need for variance. And there was a suggestion that the alternative compliance requested by the applicant is also necessary, and both were, the staff indicated that they would disapprove because they were viewed to be self-created as a result of the placement of the building. So, the building, as we have placed it, as we looked at it after reviewing the staff recommendation, essentially means moving the building nine feet or so at the southeast end. And if there's a desire to make sure that no variances requested, the building can be moved nine feet at the southeast end. As regards the alternative compliance, it is both at the rear of the building and to, which backs up against the resident, the single-family residential dwelling units, and also to what would be the west of the building, which the side yard is with the Bowie Community Center. With regard to the residential units, again, we can move the building such that it would not require that alternative compliance, and we can provide the appropriate setbacks, and that's something that the applicant is willing to do. With regard to the alternative compliance that's adjacent to the community center, we would still ask that that be granted. That's actually an area that we currently work with the city in, in terms of maintenance. We actually have a maintenance agreement with the city to take care of some of that property because some of that property is already in a buffer as a result of the existing shopping center and some of the retail that we've brought back in that area. It's, the buffer exists mainly because the property is owned residential, even though the use is the community center. So, in that instance, we don't think that it should be a big issue to grant that alternative compliance. But with regard to the variance and the other alternative compliance, both of which impact the single-family dwellings, we're willing to move the building the additional nine feet so that we meet the requirements that are established in the zoning ordinance. The second, if you sort of put the findings together, and I talked about the master plan and the density, the second finding really has to do, deal with the city code, which indicates that staff can't recommend approval in an instance where the consequences of the development is that it drives it in excess of a level of Service C. First, and I think Mr. Minner mentioned this, the preliminary plan and subdivision is the actual approval that requires an analysis and establishment of adequate public facilities. And it's not just transportation, it's others. But in this instance, that's one in which you have a set of recommendations. And we, we have shown in our traffic study that the code that has been established by the county has been in existence for a number of years shows that we meet the required level of service. And so, that preliminary plan, at least on the issue of traffic adequacy, meets the requirement, and that would be approved by the planning board as a result of meeting those requirements. But I would note that what your ordinance actually says, and I repeated this once, but I just want to go back to it a little bit, is that the staff cannot recommend approval of any development. When you add that development to the existing traffic levels, it will result in a deterioration of the traffic conditions on any such street below level of Service C. Now, I don't, I'm not attempting to play with the words, but I am an attorney, and so I have to... I thought a little humor would be nice, yes. But I have to, and, and, and actually, the ordinances, and the courts have consistently said that, you have to read ordinances by the plain meaning of the ordinance. And so, what the ordinance actually says is if, that you're, if your development is pushing it below level of Service C, if your development is pushing it below level of Service C, then the staff can't recommend approval. Mr. Minner was very clear that the, that the surpassing level of Service C already exists. It's already there. It's not this development that is pushing it below level of Service C. It is not this development that results in that deterioration. And by the clear language of the statute, that then does not become an issue for this development. That's the clear language of the statute. That's the clear language of the statute. I've had to, and I, this, this gets argued in other jurisdictions, particularly with regard to level of service. Now, in some instances, that allows an individual or an applicant to then look to do mitigation on a project. But in this instance, your code does not talk about doing mitigation, but it specifically says that it's that development that has to push it below or deteriorate it below the level of service C. We have, in our traffic study, noted that the existing property had an amount of development in that the way typically development is reviewed is that you look at the transfer, excuse me, the traffic capacity from that existing development. Part of doing redevelopment is to at least allow the developer to develop at the level that existed prior. And so when you do our traffic analysis with the existing levels of development that were on that property, you add in the new development that we're doing, we meet and stay within those traffic capacity. I would note that one of the conditions that Mr., that's in the staff report, does require, if this board shall look to approve the preliminary plan of subdivision, that there be a traffic cap placed upon it. And we think that's appropriate. One thing we would note that, that that traffic cap should not be over the entirety of the marketplace property, but it should be over the subdivision that's here, and that's parcel X-12. We think that was maybe just an oversight. But the traffic cap should be over the new development that is proposed on parcel X-12. It's the same numbers. It's just, it should reflect the preliminary plan of subdivision and not the entirety of the property. The other, just minor note I'd like to note, during Mr. Minard's presentation, he did note that the majority of the access into the property was going to be from Sage Lane. And I'm not sure where that came from. It may have been just an oversight, but essentially, the traffic analysis shows that 20 percent of the access into the property will come in from change lane, excuse me, from Sage Lane and not the majority of the traffic trips to the property. We, in some way in closing, and the one thing that I would like to do is that our view would be, and I'll come back to sum up, but our view would be is that the conceptual site plan is not necessary and can be withdrawn in that it wasn't required for this property, that what is required is a preliminary plan of subdivision and a detailed site plan, and those are the two applications that ought to be addressed by this board. That with regard to the preliminary plan of subdivision, we think that most of those conditions that are proposed in the staff report are acceptable. We do have some modifications to those conditions, and that would be, and I don't know if there's an appropriate number, but that would be applicant's exhibit A or one that we would ask be introduced into the record, and we can discuss this whenever the chairman deems it appropriate. That with regard to the detailed site plan and the preliminary plan of subdivision, that one, we think in closing that the recent actions by the city with regard to the development agreement, the text amendment, show that the policy of the city, particularly with regard to this property, was that that multifamily be a project situated where it's appropriately located now, in the density that was proposed as a part of that, and that the developer has, in his reach out to the community, made efforts to modify more than what was proposed so as to make it a, a development that could exist with the existing single-family residential to the rear. That the building footprint can be modified so as to negate the variance and the alternative compliance that is at the rear of the building, and that notwithstanding the code provision with regard to the approval of applications, this is an instance where that code provision should not be applicable, and therefore, both the preliminary plan of subdivision and the detailed site plan can be approved by this board. And that would include my presentation. I would ask to introduce these into evidence, Mr. Chairman, as whatever exhibit you indicate is appropriate. And I have copies for Mr. Minard as well.
Thank you for your presentation, and Mr. Berman, you as well. Any other advisory? Mr. Schoetz.
Counselor, eloquent as usual. Mr. Berman, just wanted to let you know, and probably some of these folks out here don't realize that Berman Enterprises and also the Berman family are tremendous neighbors in their respective communities where the development is. That said, multifamily, yes, was always on, on the table. But my understanding was this multifamily was supposed to be senior housing. I know that it says 20 percent, but my understanding was, at least my understanding was, that it was far more than that.
There was a minimum requirement in the development agreement of minimum 20 percent, yes?
Minimal. The reason that the multifamily was approved to my, again, to my understanding, which is not always right, was simply because you stated the adequate public facilities. It was viewed at that senior housing in such a location, one, there would be minimal traffic to the community; two, that you had the medical facilities for seniors that needed care; three, you had the shopping, which, and also the tertiary needs, like dry cleaners, stuff like that. And probably one of the most important was, was the proximity of EMS. You have the volunteer fire department that could get there within a minute, really seconds, which is very, very critical. Obviously, you know, the conceptual plan, even though we're not getting into the preliminary area detail, is, is really, I believe, the most important because it is the plan itself that shows to you guys, the developer, whether the community envisions you as a good neighbor or doesn't. And it's obvious that the community does not view this proposal as a good neighbor. From the county's perspective, I can see why this would be a very favorable project. They're getting $3.6 million in the educational coffers. And guess what? City of Bowie will see none of it. You know, obviously, you know, like I said, I have the highest regard for Mr. Berman and his family. I've been a witness and a participant in many of his projects. And I know that obviously, you know, the bottom line is the bottom line. And with such a performer that probably is needed with these dwelling units, you know, I applaud you reducing the parking. I applaud you guys reducing the, the amount of dwellings. But at the end of the day, it, like I said, it's just not a good fit. Sorry.
You can please hold your applause. Thank you. I would appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, may I comment or?
Sir. Go ahead.
So just, just on the four points that were raised, so in fact, while the seniors, while making sure that the development would look to bring in a, what the city declared was a minimum percentage of seniors, in fact, the residential, which by Fairmont was just market rate open to everyone, was very important to the attraction, particularly of the anchor retail. The buying power of having residential proximate to the center is very helpful to the attraction in of other retail restaurant venues that we're seeking now. With regard to the number of dwelling units, I understand that, but it's one of the reasons that we tried to make sure at every presentation, we were using essentially the same exhibit and we were discussing the same location. This conceptual site plan, it is, it is the developer's, development agreement that tells us to develop consistent with the zoning ordinance. It is the text amendment that the city supported, that the council adopted, that says only do a detailed site plan. It's not us saying that that's what we ought to do. It is the law that we are attempting to follow. And Commissioner, Commissioner member, member, I'm not sure if you guys go by. But with regard to the schools, I do think municipalities do, because of the school surcharge fee that is paid by developers, I do believe some of the money, if it doesn't go to municipalities, it has to go to schools within those municipalities. So there's a percentage.
It's certainly not 3.6.
I think Mr. Minard can respond on that. But thank you.
Sir, let me just kind of rebut some of what you said. I just want to rebut some of the things you've said because there are a couple of things that I did exclude, and I really didn't want to get into this particular part. Again, with the senior housing or that type of, you know, amenity of, of classification of people, when you start thinking about multifamily, especially ones with garages, parking, I forgot to say about, you know, possibly increased crime. Obviously, obviously, the attraction of the parking garages, you know, even in a community like Bowie, i- is kind of attractive to people that are a little bit mischievous from outside the neighborhood and also from internal, some of the youths, of course, get a little bit of boredom going. That's really all I want to say as far as that goes. But again, Counselor, the point of the law, you know, is the point of the law, but the point of common sense and compatibility to what the people want is a whole together different thing, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Schoetz. Any other questions from the board? Mr. Burt.
Good evening, Counselor. Mr. Berman, thank you very much for your presentation. I just have a few, a few questions, I think mainly for Mr. Berman. The first one is, from your standpoint, can you define what you determine as a anchor store? Earlier in your presentation, you said that Berman, your Berman organization had a, an agreement with the city in order to develop this property, that you would bring in an anchor store. And you stated that you were trying to, that you guys attempted to try to recapture Safeway, but I guess that didn't work out, so you captured Harris Teeter. I just want to know, what is your definition, not necessarily the planning, planning director's definition, but what is your definition from the Berman organization of what an anchor store is?
It's a great question. Retail development, particularly, community retail shopping centers require, in most cases, a large anchor that basically draws in a lot of people in order for the rest of their development to survive. So in that case, the grocer in this case is what we're defining as the retail anchor. Then there's something called the junior anchor, which is smaller, also brings in a lot of traffic, and that would be, for example, Petco in this case.
Okay, thank you. So it's basically about the, the number of foot traffic and not necessarily the products and or services that are being, being rented?
The, yes, it's the size and the foot traffic that's generated by a particular store that I think for myself would, would determine, would define it. And also, the, perhaps this is the most important point, is that an anchor is the type of store that other smaller shops would want to be in a development with. So it anchors both in the sense of driving the traffic, but also in the sense of driving the leasing.
And my second question pertaining to the agreement that you had with the city council and the mayor some years ago is, obviously, there's been some feedback as to the building itself, the aesthetic, the aesthetics of the building, and you guys determined to go from five to four. What is, from an economic standpoint, organizational standpoint, what is your break-even point for developing any type of, of multi, multifamily dwelling? And you went from five to four, did you consider going, say, from five to two or five to three?
Sure, it's a great question. And, and the difficult part about what drives this answer is the development of a parking garage. Parking garages are extraordinarily expensive, as well as the amenities that we feel are necessary to develop. We have extensive experience with this. We own a residential multifamily development down the street, actually called, used to be called Harmony Place, now known as the Bowen. We own several other, and we have others in development. And our performers show that a, a building approximately 300 units is basically the minimum that you need to be with its own standalone garage that you're developing and all the amenities, and it's also the quality of the building is a big element. What we're proposing here is a very, very high quality at or above the standard of, again, what was Harmony Place or is now the Bowen. And so all those considered, 300 is approximately the, the number of units that is a minimum at which point below, it's not very worth it to, to do in multifamily development. We're, of course, analyzing that all the time. It changes as the cost of construction changes, as rents change and stuff like that, but that was our analysis. And that's what we, when we heard back from the community and that, and we reduced the densities and the heights, that was basically the number that we were trying to get as close to as we could.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Burt. Any other board members have any questions? Mr. Rogers?
Good evening, Mr. Dingles and Mr. Berman. What is the, I've heard a couple of things on traffic. Okay, so what is the actual percentage of traffic that would be using Sage Lane? You said it's less than 80, or, but more than 20. So where, where is that number?
So Commissioner, I'd like to, I have Mike Lenhart here, our traffic consultant, who's very well-breasted, so let me bring him to the podium.
Can you show us on the map, the, the circulation?
Is there a way to turn that on?
For the record, my name is Michael Lenhart, Lenhart Traffic Consulting. We, I'll just take a minute and give you the background on the traffic impact study. Initially, we consulted with park and planning staff and with city planning staff on the scope of the study. We looked at intersections along Route 450 from Bel Air Drive to Stony Brook Drive through the site, and then out to Superior Lane, and then down Superior Lane and Stony Brook Drive to the intersection of Stony Brook at Superior, as well as the intersection of State, Stony Brook at State, Sage Lane, pardon me. Part of that scoping agreement, we discussed the trip assignment for the site, where people would be coming to and from, with, with both park and planning and city planning input on that. We have about 20 percent of the residential trips estimated to go down Sage Lane and then down Stony Brook Drive. The remaining 80 percent would be oriented east or west on Route 450, a large percent of it to, to the west. And again, this was with park and planning staff and with city planning staff, came to agreement on what these percentages were. We have methodology that we have to follow that follows very specific criteria. We're, we're, we don't play around with this. It's, it's specific guidelines that we follow. And so we have a main boulevard entrance off of Route 450. We have Stony Brook with the main access to the site, 450 through Superior. These are the primary access points for the residential, approximately 20 percent out the back as approved by staff and planning staff.
Okay, just for me, just for my education, could you give me?
Yes, sir.
And as quickly as possible, what's your background is and what goes into developing in traffic?
Sure. I have 25 years of experience, 10 years with state highway administration. When I left there, I was the division chief for the statewide access permits division. I've been in private sector now for 15 years, with my own business for 10. And I've done, I've been involved in reviewing and approving and preparing... And I've done, I've been involved in reviewing and approving and preparing literally thousands of traffic impact studies across the state.
And the reason why I ask that question, and maybe I can jump over to Joe, and that is that you indicated that there was a traffic study provided to you by a private citizen who did his own traffic studies. Was he, you didn't know anything about his qualifications?
No, I don't. I, I think it's just a hobby of his. It's Jim Matson, he lives in the neighborhood.
Were his results factored into the city's, the, the staff's findings?
Well, initially, we asked Mr. Lenhart to provide average daily traffic counts at the locations where we were interested in. And since his study really focused on the peak hour, you know, that's the rush hour timeframes, he had to factor those numbers up. We weren't satisfied with what we were seeing because it conflicted with what Mr. Matson was telling us in his numbers, and so the city decided to do the counts that I showed you on the map up there with the blue stars. We did our own counts during the month of September. So we felt that Mr. Matson, some of his information seemed reasonable, it was 24-hour counts, but then he had a number of other pages in his study that were not 24-hour counts, and so we didn't use those. So it was a combination of things.
When the, when the staff did their own study, did they employ an outside company to do that, or how was that done?
The Public Works Department did the counts. We have a couple of counters, and our, our staff is trained in how to collect that data and compile it.
And as it applies to the percentage of senior citizens that were designated for residency there, are you still, thank you, Mr. Linick, thank you. Are you still attempting to reach those percentages of 20% senior citizen housing?
Minimum.
Minimum?
Yes.
So there will be a minimum of 20% of the housing dedicated, set aside for senior citizens?
Correct.
No further questions, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers. Mr. Galato.
Yes, I see you want 288 units, which is about 400% more than what is allowed by the regulations. And not only do you want excessive units, you want to decrease the parking by the required amount by 30%, which means there's going to be a lot more parking on streets, which is going to make it increasingly hazardous for the traffic as well. And when you take into consideration that we have not only the shopping centers there, but we have a swimming pool, a library, and a school that kids walk back and forth to all the time, especially for rush hours, it makes it extremely dangerous, not only for traffic and pedestrians, but the children in this area as well. And I think that that is just unacceptable.
So with regard to the number of units proposed, and I'm not sure of the sort of premise you're using for the increase, because you said 400%.
I say it here, 4.95 units per acre, 10.54 acres.
So that's a, again, that's a use of a Euclidean calculation, and, which is not really appropriate in this instance. The zoning ordinance for mixed-use activity centers uses Flora ratio, and as I pointed out, that's like a point four up to a point eight. And in fact, if you looked at the entire area that, that might be done, the, the unit counts for all three shopping centers is probably in the neighborhood of about 800-plus dwelling units, if all of them went to, to mixed use. And, and even at that number, that's still going to be pretty close to what medium density. On the parking, we are actually, and we don't have that case ahead of us yet, but essentially, we're in line with the number of spaces across this metropolitan area that are being provided for multifamily projects in suburban kinds of areas. I mean, there's a, there is, there is an intended reduction in parking. Second thing I would note is, is that we have access spaces within the shopping center, even though it's showing our reduction, that I think the, the ordinance, I think it's indicated it's, we're asking for about 180 something reduction. It's actually 60. We have about 121 spaces, about 45, almost 50% in very close proximity to the building that we think will be used. And we still believe that if you look at particularly the, the organizations within the metropolitan area that look at parking and what's appropriate, and, and our own zoning ordinance is going through some changes, we're still likely overparked at 1.7.
I did look at the other areas that you had as examples, such as Heather Ridge, one on Governor's Bridge Road and another one. And when I looked at it on the maps, now Heather Ridge does have access to 197, but most of them are insulated by rows surrounding them. They don't have direct access to intersections that directly feed onto a highway like 450. The others don't, this one does.
I understand that viewpoint, but one of the reasons that mixed-use activity centers are promoted is, is to try and be in close proximity where there is public transit available, which is available along 450. And again, parking now is done in such a way that you do make attempts to reduce parking. Part of it is, is that when you build a garage, you get an assigned space, a lot, and oftentimes you actually have to pay if you're going to get an additional space. And then part of it is, is to make sure that there's at least one space available per unit, and then the additional space that's used is used for the other parking that's provided within, either on the parcel or as a part of the adjacent parking within the shopping center.
Thank you. I would like to remind the audience that the outburst and the applause, you know, that needs to stop immediately, please. Otherwise, we'll be here all night. I would appreciate your cooperation with that. Any other members have any questions of the applicant? I have one. So the traffic count is already failing. How are you proposing to make it better?
Mr. Chairman, we weren't allowed to get into discussions with your staff about potential ways to mitigate our traffic. And, and when I say that, typically in instances, let me start over. So first, the actual level of service that the county would require for preliminary plan and subdivision is a level of service D, and we do meet that requirement. So if we were mitigating, we would actually be mitigating beyond what is the county requirement for preliminary plan and subdivision. We'd be simply looking to mitigate some of the traffic between C and D to address what's in your ordinance. We have looked at potential possibilities. However, because of, I think, the way your ordinance is structured and because the staff reached that condition, we did not have any additional discussions with staff on that issue.
Thank you, sir. Last chance for any of the board members? Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
As I mentioned earlier, I'll be calling two people at a time. So when the next person is up, you know, have your stuff ready. And a friendly reminder that you can simply say, you know, hey, I agree with the person in front of me that spoke. And that way, you don't have, if they've covered everything that you wanted to say, you can simply state your name and address, and that the person in front of you already said what you want to say. At this time, and forgive me if I butcher any names, Marilyn Coolidge will be up first, followed by Mr. John Lally. Friendly reminder, you have three minutes. Marilyn Coolidge, please, up front. Marilyn Coolidge going twice. I can't hear you.
I beg the court to come first to the city council, I'd like to get her home. I am on the list, but if it would, if anybody in here would...
What, what is your name, sir?
Adrian Anor.
Okay.
I am on the list somewhere there, sir. I'm a simple man. I understand the attorneys like to spin words, but my question to the individuals that are building or want to build this building, my question is, how many of you would buy a house right there with that building facing you? Not one of you would buy a house right there. Not one of you has a house that has a building, four stories, five stories, even two stories, in front of your houses. All of you gentlemen, though I don't know who you are, I don't know where you live, I guarantee you, you don't have a building 100 feet from your yard.
I asked you guys kindly earlier to please hold your applause. I don't want to remove anybody, okay? Thank you, sir, please continue.
My, my, my second thing was, again, play on the words or how the ordinance is written. So according to you guys, the traffic is bad already, right? It already fails. But adding more people isn't going to make it worse somehow? I don't understand that. Last I checked, adding even 100 additional apartments there would make traffic worse than it already is. So if it's failing now, is it not going to fail more later? Just a question. Thank you. And I appreciate you guys letting me go first.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
You have a good night. Mr. John Lally, please, followed by Chris Bogley is next. Chris Bogley after Mr. Lally. Good evening.
Good evening. My name's John Lally. I, I live at 5511 Park Drive with my wife. We've been there for 37 years. We raised five kids there and spent a heck of a lot of time at the marketplace, ate a lot of pizza at Angelina's, had a lot of ice cream, saw a lot of movies, good and bad, but it was a part of us, our family life. And it was very important to have it there, close to us. When it went down, and it went down hard, it just sat there for, I guess, 10 years. Couple of developers dealt with it or tried, and they, they just threw up their hands. They came in, usually a developer comes in and proposes something, and they say, oh, mixed use, mixed use, it's going to be great, going to be great, going to have retail, going to have commercial, going to have everything, it's all, all going to be great, but we need the, the residential. There's a good argument there. But they always say, let me build the residential first, because then, you know, that'll make, the folks will come and then they'll, they'll have a demand for the, the commercial. Well, that didn't happen at the Newtown Center in the 70s. It didn't happen. They came in, they built the residential first, and then they split, because they said, oh, market changed. So these guys have done the reverse. They came in and they tore down a dump, they brought in better retail than was there before, and they talked about, well, the reason we can do this is, was that we need the residential. Now, I live, I'm going, I'm across the creek from what's going to be 2,500 apartments over at the Melford. Now, if you do those apartments over there, make sure they look like this, because they should have structured parking, because that means they're expensive. And that means that they're not like the, I lived in a garden-style apartment in Riverdale when I was a kid, and, you know, it, it kept the rain off my head, but I, I wouldn't want to be there again. But that's, that's the kind of stuff you want to have for guys like me and my wife when we want to retire, when I don't want to cut grass anymore. I want to have a place that's nice, and I, I can park my car, and I don't have to, you know, be in a place like I was in Riverdale. So with that, I'll, I'll conclude my comments. I'm for this project. I, I hope you'll give it consideration. And make sure the Melford has structured parking too. Brief commercial, you know, announcement. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Chris Bogley? No? All right, thank you. Larry Swank, followed by Kevin Kirchner? Kevin Kirchner, you'll be next, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, I'm Larry Swank. I live at 12506 Scarlet Lane, and, which is on the southwest border of the seed plan Bowie Main Street. I've talked with many impacted neighbors who are concerned about preserving the character of our original section of Levitt Bowie. I'm not going to, you all have covered all about the master plan and how it, the development should have been out near 450, so I won't talk about that. We did have 10 years to get it right. We got it wrong, and, and Burman Enterprises plans to make it worse. That's saying, they, they're our good neighbor, and they're, and they're running a good show, and they live right behind me, and they've, they've done everything we've asked them to do. So they're good people to work with. But of course, my issue is this four-story thing, 54 feet from my back fence. We only have two chances in a century to impact real change on a site like the marketplace. We've lost out on the appealing Bowie Main Street vision of upscale, of an upscale destination with unique character and sense of place. And in my opinion, we now have just another nice suburban strip mall. The developer agreed in writing to the city to redevelop the marketplace in accordance with the concepts contained in that master plan. Developer elected to ignore key components of the plan and other guiding documents in development of the commercial component of the marketplace. And, and that, that was, that's inside the, their signed agreement. I agree with the planning development to disapprove the, the concept and preliminary plan and detailed site plan for all the reasons we talked about, density and traffic and scale. I recommend disapproval of all the plans, however, if the preliminary plan application is approved by either you all or the city council, I'm requesting that the following condition be added to insurance compliance with city and county policy strategies, citizen input, and future DSP review. Please add on page 38 a new section, add a G to the bottom of that list under B2, and require them to provide a plan that conforms to all zoning ordinances and site design guidelines. That will help me with trash collection hours, things like noise level, a ban on outdoor dining, exterior lighting guidelines, which they're violating right now, and a ban on balconies for units overlooking adjacent family residences, which should never be allowed. We have young children out there, and, and they're going to be four stories up, and that shouldn't be allowed. I have a recommendation for you all. Well, first of all, I'd like to tell you that the Stony Brook numbers that we came up with are, do not meet Level D for the county.
Your time is up, sir.
Time's up.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. Kevin Kirchner, followed by Ms. Tamika Washington. Mr. Kirchner.
Thanks for letting me talk. I was asked to look at crime over at the, where am I going? I'm going with the Bowie, gosh. Town Center, exactly. I could spin a tale, I talked to police, I got stolen, but that was only $700 worth. I got it back, the police were, were great. But at some point, when we were talking, there were a lot of back and forth and blah, blah, why this or that, and most of them were just silly things, like what does a garden thing move on wheels, or is it one, is it three? So crazy little stuff like that got in the way. But in, in all the, the, the questions, there was, there was things that, that spoke loud and clear, which were, and, and the police finally figured out, I, I didn't steal my own stuff, and then it, it started to be sort of easy to be talking and get my stuff back and blah, blah, blah. But what the, the takeaway that, that I'm really talking, want to talk about was the 500 apartments at the edge of Bowie Town Center. And every, it was pretty chummy when we were talking, and I, I was told... And every, it was pretty chummy when we were talking, and I was told by police people that, that, let me see, where do I start up again? There were people being robbed, their, they get their shopping and they walk home to the, to the five hundred, I think, units, and, and the weapon of choice was a knife. People were getting accosted when they came from Macy's going home, or they came from Sears and all that.
Mr. Kirchner.
Am I out? Okay, well, I got some in.
I appreciate it. Thank you, sir. Ms. Washington, followed by Myra Barrios? Myra Barrios here? It's Myra Barrios here. Carlos Del Castillo? No? Janice Ninchka? Janice Ninchka? No? Sorry, Ms. Washington, just bear with me. William Ninchka? No, okay. James Daly? Do I have a James Daly? Cindy Pepin? Cindy Pepin? Perhaps these are the folks that left. Steve Friedman? Steve Friedman? Faith Lehefinkel? Faith, are you here? No. Fran Longwell? Fran, thank you, finally. Come on down. You're the next contestant. Ms. Washington, sorry for the delay.
That's okay. Good evening. My name is Tamika Washington, and I live at 12502 Scarlet Lane. As you may know, we've been circulating a petition of the residents of Bowie against this apartment building. We have about eight hundred and forty signatures of this state from sections A to section Y, though the vast majority are, as you may have guessed, from section S. Another resident started a Facebook page titled "No to the Bowie Marketplace Apartments" that has almost thirteen hundred members. So you can see, we, as a community, do not support this apartment building. I wanna discuss two issues. I was gonna save the parking issue for later, but I don't know how much longer we're gonna be here tonight. So there's not enough parking, right? We talked about that. There are almost two hundred spaces short. In a letter to the city, the developer said that, well, it doesn't matter, because residents are gonna either walk to the shopping center, or they're gonna take public transportation. That's not true, right? We're gonna drive. So the spaces that he thinks are gonna be held for the apartment building will not. And then he was talking about, well, there's not, in the letter, he also said that there's not, they're not in the middle of a neighborhood, so it doesn't matter, so there will be no place for sort of overflow parking. That, of course, is also not true, right? It's in the middle of a neighborhood, so all of that parking will filter out onto Sage, onto Scarlet, onto Stony Brook. I don't know what's gonna happen if there's a snowstorm and no one can park on the street, so what then? In response to the lack of parking, the developer proposed making the parking spaces smaller, right? This is a community of families that drive minivans, small business owners that drive SUVs and pickup trucks. When you try to put bigger cars into smaller spaces, the incidences in parking lots go up about thirty-two percent as far as traffic accidents. So this is not a workable solution. And the planning director, the second issue I wanna talk about is the zoning, right? It's talked about a couple times this evening. The planning director said the parcel is still zoned for commercial use, which it is. The Cali Council did some process trying to circumnavigate what is a typical process, and they passed a law CB sixty twenty fifteen that allows this commercially zoned property to be used for mixed use. But the zoning has not taken place, and it will not take place for several more years. I'm saying this because I don't want you guys to feel like there has to be a residential component back there, because that's not the case. With that being said, we're not opposed to any residential component being back there. We just don't want medium-density or high-density units. We spoke to the developer about instead putting in low-density units, for example, senior housing, like they told the City Council that they would, but the developer is really only concerned about his bottom line and not the impact it's gonna have on our beloved neighborhood. So we are asking you to reject this proposal for this two-hundred-and-eighty-five-unit building.
Thank you.
Good evening.
One second, Ms. Longwell. Edward Gildenhorn? If you can come on up, sir, you'll be next. Ms. Longwell, thank you.
Good evening. Thank you. My name is Fran Longwell. I live on Safety Turn, which is a block from where this is gonna be. Just to give you some of my background, I prosecuted in Prince George's County for twenty-nine years. I then left Prince George's County and went to Calvert County and prosecuted down there for nine years, and then decided it was time to give up being around criminals. And I live in Bowie because I don't wanna live around criminals. I used to live in Adelphi, and I lived in a building where we had a garage, and in that parking garage, there were assaults constantly, there were thefts, people were robbed, my car lost its wheels and tires. So parking garages are not safe places, and I don't like parking garages personally. The crime I'm concerned about is when you bring in a high-density, high-density unit like this into a community, it does attract criminal elements. It just does, especially with the shopping center there. We've already had armed robberies across the street in the Giant Shopping Center. We've had an armed robbery at our Shell Station. We've had robberies up the street next to Taco Bell. We have it already, and to bring in that many more residents, and residents, when they rent, don't have a stake in the community. They're there and they're gone. I spoke to someone who lives at the Bowen. She moved in the Bowen when it was fairly new, when it was the other apartment building. She said there was no one on her whole floor that is there when she moved in. She goes, people, come and go, come and go, come and go. And in that building, she's already had thefts out of her car, and there's thefts in that area, and we know that Town Center, unfortunately, is a little theft, man, beyond thefts. There's robberies, and there's strong-arm robberies. I talked to someone in Porter Ridge, and he told me, when they, when we built that shopping center, it ruined his neighborhood. That shopping center ruined their neighborhood. What, our shopping center is okay, it's a nice shopping center right now, but putting an apartment building back there will ruin our neighborhood. We've been here almost forty years, and we came here away from high-density living, and we love living in Bowie. Bowie's a small town, still a small-town feel, and we hope it remains that way and that you reject this, and there's every reason to reject it besides the crime, the schools, crowding, everything. Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Hold your applause, please, hold your applause. Followed, Mr. Gildenhorn, you're next, followed by Richard Dodson. Richard Dodson, are you here, sir? All right, you'll be next. Mr. Gildenhorn.
Thank you for letting me speak. My name is Edward Gildenhorn. I live at 12115 Tanglewood Lane with my fiancee and her family. Before that, I lived, me and my fiancee stayed for, lived for two years at Heatheridge Apartments. Before we moved into there, during our apartment search, we looked at Harmony Place, now known as the Bowen. I wanted, I just wanna point out, I did not know that this is the same company. I wanna point out that two years ago, when we did our search, their smallest unit with, which was, if memory serves, six hundred-odd square feet, was about sixteen hundred dollars before, a month before utilities, which, and apparently it was geared to millennials. It had a lot of stuff that millennials would like, but the, I, you'd be hard-pressed to find a millennial that could afford something like that. I mean, that's a mortgage at a lot of the homes here in Bowie. I also wanna point out a few other things. There have been a lot of different reasons stated why the building of the Marketplace Apartments would not be beneficial to our community, and one of them that was said was that one of the, you know, one of the only traffic, you know, the big, or at least the traffic, the biggest traffic problem would be on the corner of Superior and Stony Brook. I wanna point out that that is a massive problem. There are a lot of locals who use the back roads and a lot of the neighborhood streets to get through to different parts of town. It's not just main roads. You know, you use that, you use that when you need to get further outside of Bowie, but for the most part, you use the local roads. And the traffic density was pretty bad before. The Harris Teeter and other shops opening up, though they are wonderful, have increased traffic density even more. I believe, as someone who has only lived here a few years but loves the community with all his heart, I believe that the, that adding, you know, fi, you know, assuming one or two cars per family unit, you know, you're looking at an extra five hundred cars in that area, and that will only serve to congest the area further. The decisions of this board directly affect the health of our community. I beg of you not to overclog the veins of our community. All that does is stop the heart. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Dodson? After Mr. Dodson would be Edith and/or Mike Bottler. Thank you. Mr. Dodson.
My name is Richard Dodson. I have lived in Bowie since nineteen seventy-nine. My wife has lived in Bowie since Christmas week sixty-one. She lived on Stony Brook Drive, or Lane. And I can tell you that because she lived on Stony Brook, she always allowed fifteen extra minutes to get out of her driveway. That was in sixty-one. It's only gotten worse. As we saw from the diagrams, the traffic count in this area already does not meet the standard. The lawyer's, you know, explanation is, they can't be held responsible for that. So they're saying, it's only going to get worse, but it's not their fault. Now, Mr. Lenhart, you asked about his credentials. He is also the traffic advisor for Melford, and his explanation of the parking lot on Route Three is it meets county standards. And I always ask him every time we meet, for what? A road or a parking lot? And it truly is, if you've been in it at rush hour, a parking lot. So the traffic is one issue. The other thing that has been mentioned is the sightlines to something that completely does not fit in this neighborhood. And the lawyer's explanation is, well, the master plan is just a guideline, but it's a ten-year-old guideline. It's worked, but we should ignore it, because it doesn't fit our plan. And so I would say, if they dropped that two stories below ground, to answer one question, yeah, the sightlines would be better, but the traffic conditions wouldn't be any better. So I think we really have one last question. Why did they say we don't need to worry about the concept plan? That's because if they can skip that step, it takes you folks out of the equation and it leaves it up to the county. The county doesn't have any skin in this game, except they're gonna make more money. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir. Hold your applause, please. After Ms. Bottler, we will have Michael Gorman. Michael Gorman, are you here? Thank you, sir. Ms. Bottler.
Good evening. My name is Edith Bottler, and I live at 12607 Brunswick Lane, which is just right off of Stony Brook Drive. And we've been there for about fifteen years. I have four children and a wonderful husband, and I concur with all the arguments against this project as far as traffic, the visual, the crime, everything else. And I'd like to add to that, that there was a lot of argument about, well, across the metropolitan region, this is how things are done. Well, if I wanted to live like that, I would live in other parts of the metropolitan region. But the fact is, is that we chose Bowie because it is unique and because it is special. And I would say that the thing that is most valuable to Bowie is that sense of community and is that sense of space that we have right now. And I charge that as we move forward into the future, one of our greatest assets is going to be the fact that we've preserved our sense of space, our sense of openness, our sense of not being crammed in and sitting on parking lots every second of every day. So I would hope that you will not approve these apartments for that reason and preserve our, one of our greatest assets, which is our space. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gorman will be followed by Kevin McVeigh, or Kevin Veigh? Thank you, sir.
Okay, I'm Michael Gorman. Part of my family moved in around this area in the eighteen-fifties, and we moved into Bowie in the mid-nineteen-sixties in the Overbrook Section, and then in the Amber Meadows Section, and I was on the Bowie Advisory Planning Board, with some of you were children, no, I'm born. In the nineteen-seventies, through the nineteen-seventies into the nineteen-eighties, and Joe, you were a child. Okay? Okay. Good land-use planning requires a gradual increase in density, and I'd like to suggest one, two, three, four, five levels. One to, one, two, one-to-two-story single-family detached, one-to-two-story townhouses, and everyone can see them in Bowie in your head, right? Two-to-three-story garden apartments, it's around City Hall, moderate three-to-four-story multi-use, sort of around the pond, south and a little bit west of City Hall, and then moderate four-to-five-story multi-use, which is what this is. What happened then to one-to-two-story townhouses, two-to-three-story garden apartments, moderate three-to-four-story multi-story dwellings? They just got skipped in this proposal. That clearly is not good gradual density growth. Okay? The second thing is, the only positive aspect that I can see from this dwelling unit, which is about five times, six, no, seven times taller than the backyard fences of these poor people who live on the, on that street, is that since the apartment building is on the north side, they will forever be in shade. Okay? Okay, with lots of moss. Okay? The, let me see here. From the perspective of the thing, you go up to their fence, they go to their fence, and they're just gonna go like this, look straight up in the air, forty, forty-four, forty-five more feet tall. And they talked about the perspective, and they showed some very lovely pictures, which are great. My wife is five foot two. I could position her in such a way that she would be taller than Mount Everest, depending on where you put the camera. Okay? The last thing, the last thing is, now, I am not a traffic planner. I have an undergraduate degree in math and a master's degree in education. However, I have been driving in and around the Bowie area for only fifty years, okay? And if you're coming from Washington, DC, which I did for virtually all the fifty years, you come out fifty, and you get on that loop to 197, and then you grab Ken Hill, and then you go take a right on Bel Air Drive, you take a left on Stony Brook, and you keep on driving, and the first right turn you can take is Sage Lane into their parking garage. The alternative is to go down Superior, so it's between the devil and the deep blue sea. Either way, it's, it's, it's crazy. Okay, that's it.
Your time is up, sir.
Thank you, Joe.
How you doing? My name is...
One second, sir, one second. Next up will be Fiona Moody. Fiona, are you here? Fiona? Thank you, sir, sorry to interrupt you.
That's right. My name is Kevin McVeigh, and I've spent most of my life here in Bowie. When I was younger, thirty-four years ago, I bought a home, and I'm still living in that home and raised all my, my family here. I live in the K section, which is a ways away from where we're talking about, but it's not that far. As the gentleman just said, you know, everybody doesn't, is, that lives in Bowie doesn't work in Bowie. That traffic goes down to fifty, they're, they're coming down towards Bel Air Drive, they're turning on Bel Air Drive, but they're coming down that road. If they're working in, you know, going down to 301, if they come out their apartments, they're going, they're turning right on 450, and what happens? It bottlenecks down to one lane if they're going down to three or 301. So, traffic-wise, the statistics that they talked about are not realistic. Crime, at the other hand, we've seen this, you know, they're talking about the parking spaces. Parking garages are not a safe place. Where are the extra parking spaces that they're getting? They're gonna get them from the shopping center itself, which means not in the behind the shopping center, because they're also talking about moving the building up nine feet, which leaves nothing there between the back of the shopping center and the apartment building. So that's gonna be out in the retail section. We're gonna have retail section car, I mean, residential cars sitting in the retail section twenty-four hours at night? What does that promote? You know, you come out and you find out, you have no supervision there. Yes, the grocery store is open twenty-four hours, but they're not watching that whole parking lot all the way from... lot all the way from one end to the other. So, I hope that you would, you know, disapprove of all three of these measures. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. After Ms. Moody will be Greg Julian. Greg, are you here? Come on up, please. Ms. Moody, you have a floor.
Just before I begin, a resident wants me to put on the record that he has a question about where resident parking, a resident guest parking is going to go if the resident parking is already short 200 approximately spaces. And this is beginning my remarks. Bowie is my home. I have lived here all of my life. I work here now. And when I think of Bowie, I know it as an established, multi-generation community where young couples move to raise their children. They're attracted by the quiet, established neighborhoods here, and they end up staying for a lifetime. I constantly hear about Marketplace being referred to as Bowie's Main Street, the area through which we are welcoming our visitors, as well as the residents coming back to the haven that we call home, Bowie, Maryland. The proposed development of 285 apartments will destroy the integrity of our community permanently. Residents in the surrounding area will be subject to their new apartment neighbors looking out at them from balconies into their backyards, watching their children play at all hours. At night, the lights from the parking lot, balconies, and apartments will disturb sleep, causing many homeowners to already purchase blackout curtains for their houses. Bowie has already seen an increase of traffic with the opening of Harris Teeter, making the area impossible to navigate during after-work hours. Adding these apartments will only lead to more congestion and accidents. Property values will inevitably decrease, and senior citizens relying on the equity of their homes to support them through retirement. And young couples with newly purchased homes will see their property values plummet, shackling them financially. I've heard that these apartments are going to go for $3,000. I don't see Bowie sustaining that price point. A Cape Cod on Savoy, which is about a mile from there, it's been up for lease for two months. And that's a 1,700 square foot home, two baths at $2,100 a month. Simply put, 2 to 3-bedroom apartments will not lease for 3K a month. The city cannot sustain this price point at this time. Property values of the current residents will absolutely suffer, irreparably destroying homeowners' finances. The increase in supply leads to a decrease in price. This is Economics 101, and we cannot do this to current residents. We have one chance here to either maintain or destroy the unique character and integrity of this city, which is really, at this point, unique in Prince George County and quite certainly across the state. Marketplace is not an appropriate location for apartments in Bowie. We cannot do this to Bowie residents. We must protect the integrity of our community, keep Bowie a community where people stay for a lifetime and not a 12-month lease.
Thank you, Ms. Moody. Mr. Julian, you're up next, followed by Ted Herman. Ted, are you here? You'll be up next, sir.
Good evening. Thanks for the opportunity to speak. My name is Greg Julian. I live at 12411 Stonehaven Lane. My wife and I moved here a year and a half ago after 30 years of Army service. After extensive research, we decided on this neighborhood, this community. And had we known that this project was under development, we would have looked elsewhere. After hearing the developers talk about their plan, it seemed to be focused on the immediate area around their project. But as you can see from this room, that has an impact far beyond the immediate area of that project. And I heard little discussion about the crime rates, other than from the community. And I heard little discussion about the property values as a result of those crime rates. And I respectfully ask that you consider that and deny these proposals.
Thank you, sir. Followed by Mr. Herman will be Brian Sudeth. Brian, are you here? Thank you, sir.
Yeah, I'm Ted Herman. 40 years on Superior Lane. I'll start out with a positive. The positive is, I really, with some doubts, have seen that the Marketplace has turned into really a wonderful thing to happen. I appreciate Mr. Berman's efforts. I've seen him work with the community a lot. He's talked me on the phone personally. He's had his chief engineer call me personally twice to make sure there's long, tall lights in the parking lot right in our window. They face right in my wife's eyes when she sleeps her bed. Luckily, I sleep on the other side of the bed. But they did install some kind of balfers or some kind of downlighting, so they wouldn't be so severe. So, I appreciate all that. I appreciate all the comments made by the council members and all the thoughtful work done by all the city planners. Number one on negatives is, I really question when and the hours that the original traffic study was conducted. I have a fear it might have been done, since the numbers are so low as far as traffic, it might have been done last January 22nd on the height of the blizzard. But I really question the legitimacy of the figures I've heard and read about. I do appreciate the gentleman, whoever did all those figures on his own. They sound, they're really sound figures, and I can tell and testify by trying to back out of my driveway on Superior Lane every day, it is not easy. It's very tough before the Marketplace came up, and it's a lot tougher now. But I still appreciate the shopping center the way it is. Number two, I also see that if the Bowen was made and has success, every residential site has its own unique variables. And I don't think you can transplant and say, "Well, this works over here, so it should work over there as well." So, that's my problem with the whole idea that we can work anyplace. I think some people said that the traffic and the access roads are so different in the community, like I heard about 197 and the backups over there. So, I would say the same problem exists over where we live, that the situation is definitely different than what's going over by Bowen. I don't see that many houses right on top of the shopping center at Bowen area, but I do see a lot of houses in my community. So, I'm hoping that Mr. Berman and his associates keep the open mind that we're all trying to work together as a community.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Sudeth will be followed by Brian Murtaugh. Brian, are you here? You'll be up next, sir.
Hi, I'm Brian Sudeth. I'm homeowner at 12604 Brunswick Lane. I'm an original resident since 1962 in the B section. And when I grew up here, we could play in the streets. You know, we played ball in the streets, and White Marsh Park was my playground, and I loved that. When my wife and I were married, we moved away. We went to Hyattsville, we went to Falls Church, we finally ended up in Reston. But when we started a family, this is where we came back to. And that was 25 years ago, and we're very proud to be here, and we really don't want to see the tenure of Bowie change radically. I have already some difficulties with some of the traffic increasing almost twice to where it was. While I appreciate the excellent work that Berman Enterprises has done in overhauling Marketplace, and I have enjoyed conversations with Brian Berman, and I would like to say something nice about this next phase. I personally cannot support the construction of apartments at this location now or ever. In the city code, Bowie determined minimum acceptable levels for city residential streets due to an overriding concern for public safety. This is exactly the situation our city code explicitly warns us about and prohibits us from approving. And as a clarification, I heard several times they were talking about, the city code says the planning department cannot, quote, "recommend approval." It actually says "shall not approve" or "recommend approval." So, that's a difference in the wording. The "shall not approve" is very stern language. I remember Racetrack Road and what it was like in the 1970s with massive backups. I have no desire to destroy the quality of life in Bowie with such an impact. Just by adding the Chick-fil-A, which is already noted for traffic issues locally, and the new shopping center, my family is already noting significant rise in traffic on Stony Brook Drive, trying to turn left from Brundwick, and we have to wait longer than before, even at a previously quiet time at 2:00 PM. The apartments will overload our streets. We're also focused on blocking another new development just down 450. Our roads and streets are not capable of handling this. Others besides Berman Enterprises conducted several traffic studies, spending countless hours going over the data, and have clearly indicated the neighborhood streets are already too crowded and are already exceeding the level of service limits specified in code. My second concern is our service infrastructure for water, sewer, gas, and electric. In my area, we are constantly repairing and replacing damaged water and gas pipes and electrical cables in the neighborhood, which are the first and second built in Levitt Bowie, as the oldest sections, putting additional load on an overstressed and failing infrastructure is irresponsible fiscally and functionally. So, I ask you to please pay attention to the public safety issues called out in our city code, and do not approve or recommend approval of this apartment development. These are not actions consistent with Bowie continuing to be an award-winning, green city. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next up will be Douglas Maxfield. Douglas, are you here? Mark Wascavage? Okay. Are you Douglas, sir?
Oh.
Okay. You'll follow this gentleman. You have a floor, sir.
Hi, how are you? Brian Murtaugh. I actually have two residences, one on Stereplane and one on Starlight Lane. My parents were in the first 100 people to move to Bel Air Estates, as it was called then. And when Levitt built this town, he had a man named Leonard that he had design these streets. You know, and they called him in as an expert. So, if you ever get lost anywhere in Bowie, if you go to the end of the street, you take a right, you go to the end of the street, you take a left, you'll always end up on a drive or a main road, supposedly from anywhere in Bowie. Okay? That's the way it's designed. But now, with all the traffic that we do have in Bowie, it just doesn't accommodate it. The gentleman said there was an issue before they got here, that it's not their problem. It's going to add to the problem. They always had zoning issues in Bowie. From the time that it was first established back in 1961, you could not have things over a certain height, you could not have neon signs, you could not have traffic lights in residential area, you could not have a gas station in the center of Bowie development, you could not paint your house a different color unless you had approval from the council. It had to stay the same color that it was when you bought it, you know? They had lots of different things when Bowie was originally set up as Bel Air Estates. Things have changed over the years, but they haven't changed enough to take a building and slap it right behind somebody's house. Now, that's a 20715 zip code. Now, if you have car insurance and you're in a 20715 zip code, you have one price. If you move right up to Bowie Town Center and you have a 20716 zip code, your insurance goes way up. And the reason that it does is because of the crime rate. That crime rate goes up, your insurance goes up, also the home values go down. Having two homes very, very close to where the shopping center is, I do not want to see my home values go down. When my parents bought the house where they did, they used to have the town meetings and the liquor store at what used to be called Bel Air Shopping Center, then became Marketplace. They stood on a wooden box and they figured out where they were going to put things in Bowie. They picked our home because we had an elementary school at the bottom of the street, a junior high at the top of the street. As you got older, the high school was exactly one mile away, and so was the shopping center. And they would feel safe, as we got older, to walk to the shopping center. Now, with parking garages and everything else, it won't be safe for kids to walk to the shopping center. Those parking spots that they've eliminated, that means that it's going to flow out onto the street. There's already not enough ways to get through there. If you were at Superior Lane trying to turn onto Standing Brook, I think a problem because the city of Bowie, they should have a stop sign. It should be a three-way stop. It would eliminate a lot of problems. People could get out of Superior Lane very quickly, just like they need at Ken Hill and Bel Air Drive, a three-way stop. It would eliminate a lot of problems trying to commute through Bowie. But it's building up more and more and more traffic, just like the gentleman said. They don't always go down to Stony Brook. They also cut down Stonehaven, so it's affecting a lot of other streets besides Stony Brook.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Mr. Maxfield, you'll be followed by Mr. Wascavage. Mr. Maxfield-
Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen, and the board, distinguished guests, and most important way, citizens of Bowie. I have agreed with everything people said, all right. I had just four little recommendations. I agree with the city council, or the city planning board staff meeting report. I think I also agree with Mr. Swank, who was up here. I think you should add paragraph G to page 38, required that any further development be in accordance with the city and county zoning laws. Third, it might be a good idea to freeze all development along Main Street and Bowie until Route 197 and Route 450 are completed. That might help handle a little bit of the traffic problems. Also, as far as apartments go, we kind of agree that maybe there should be one or two story apartments there for senior citizens only. We do not want an inner-city problem like DC and Baltimore in our town here in Bowie. Now, it would be unfair to not mention that we've been in Bowie since '62. We come in and we bought in '68 down there on Scarlet Lane. And this is the third shopping center that's been built on that soil, and I'll have to admit, it's the best. I think it's great. You've done a fine job. I left here in March. There was mounds of concrete dirt and iron, about 60 feet high. I got back here three weeks ago, and my God, you got Harris Twitter and everything else there. I mean, Christ, I don't think it would have happened if I'd have stayed here. Now, I do, I am somewhat chagrined, though, that we have elected representative, Diane Representative Stony Brook, which is that area. And I think maybe if we'd have got a letter or a notice here back in somewhere 14, 15, and said, "Hey, folks, we got a dog in this race," I think the brain power of the American people and those of Stony Brook, we could have solved this whole problem a year and a half ago. But you leave out the folks, and this is what we get. Shouldn't do that. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. After Mr. Wascavage, we will have Michael Botega. Michael Botega, yeah. You'll be next, sir.
Thank you. I live at the corner of Stony Brook and Swirl, and I live in the area where the traffic test failed. First of all, I'd like to remind everyone, because I do agree with everyone who's spoken against these motions, first of all, I'll summarize with a number of reminders for the council. First of all, the government has given us a lot of numbers, and to many of us, they're very abstract with density and traffic delays. So, I'd like to remind you of that. I've lived in Bowie for over 30 years, and over at least the last 20 years, I've seen traffic increase on Stony Brook and Stonehaven, just as a testimony to that. Also, they're telling us that traffic on Sage Patterson is only going to be about 20%, and I don't think we can tell those people where to drive the shortest distance to their property. I'd just like to say that, of course, we all know that this is going to increase traffic. Over 400 parking spaces, 400 cars on the road every day. We all know that's going to increase traffic. It's going to increase accidents, and it's going to cause many, many safety concerns for our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next up will be Stan Walker. Stan, are you here? Thank you, sir. Come on up.
Hi, my name is Michael Botega. I live at 12422 Sarah Lane. Been a resident in Bowie just under 30 years. I wanted to thank Mr. Minert and the city of Bowie for their presentation. I'm against this development. I live right off of where Sage Lane is going to dump its supposed 20% cars, which just isn't practical. That's the equivalent of driving out the back of your neighbor's backyard to go out to the highway. It's just not going to happen that way. Superior and Stony Brook right now is a nightmare. They're saying 50 seconds right now. That is before the rest of this residential of 500 to 1,000 people are going to be there with their 500-plus cars. That's assuming no one goes there as a friend. That's just who lives there, that we're putting on that footprint. In addition to that, you're going to have the stores that are not yet developed, the employees of those stores, and the shoppers that are going to come through the same intersection that's already knotted up. In addition to that, if the plan goes according to plan for Harris Teeter, it's my understanding that the grassy knoll inside the shopping center is going to have another gas station that the grassy knoll inside the shopping center is going to have another gas station inside the shopping center. Who's going to look me in the eye and tell me that's not going to knot up both the inside and the outside of the main veins and roads inside that development? That's simply not a fact. As far as not only the cars, but there's car pollution that's going to come with that. There's noise pollution that's going to come with that. There's out-the-window five hundred to a thousand cars thrown-out-the-window pollution that's going to come with that. The development is a very nice development, but it's a half loaf. This is not needed. This wasn't here for fifty-five years, and it doesn't need to be here now. A lot of people are upset by this, and it really kind of feels like we just had a national election, and one of the themes, regardless of where your politics are, was the forgotten man. And most of the people in this room are hard-working, God-fearing, raised in the community, be involved with your church and raise your family here. They picked this community because of how it was developed. This wasn't a raw piece of land and hope they don't develop a golf course across the street from you. This was established in the sixties, and this is where people want to live. I would invite you all to think, one street back from wherever you live, on a postage stamp, putting five hundred to a thousand people, looking me in the eye and telling you that, according to the master plan, that won't adversely affect the quality of life in this community. It's just not possible. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Walker, you'll be next. After Mr. Walker will be Norma Martoff. Norma, are you here? Norma, you'll be next. Mr. Walker, you're up.
My name's Stan Walker. My wife and I live thirteen, two oh six, Eithon Lane. I'm a, we've been there since seventy-five, and very happy with Bowie. Grew up in Heightsville, lifelong resident of PG County. We moved out this way for many of the reasons people say, of the quiet community, a family, places to bring up a young family. So, as not to use up my three minutes, can the traffic analysis expert over here tell me when you took your traffic study? What band of time? I dare say it was before Harris Teeter and the shopping center in the shell of itself.
Mr. Walker, whether you can have any questions for them at this time.
But it wasn't, okay.
We can discuss after.
Okay. It's just, yeah, numbers way, way down. And all the stores aren't even filled out and up and running, and the front of the parking lot there at Harris Teeter is easily half-full now, with Chick-fil-A and all the other stores that are cranking. So, once you fill up those other stores, the traffic and 450, just going in and out of Free State into Marketplace and on the side streets, it's just insane. And this apartment building is just going to, as all the people are saying, not only the residents, but their friends that visit, and then we're going to eliminate parking places, so that means they're going to use the parking places for the shoppers at the shopping center. It's just, and I echo what a number of the people said, that a parking garage is a recipe for crime because of the sightlines and the lighting and a plethora of reasons. So, thank you very much for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Martoff? Following Ms. Martoff will be Emisa, Emisla, I can't really read the last name, A.I.A.H. maybe? Anywhere close? Nothing? Kim Gross? Kim Gross, Kim, are you here? No? All right. Then we would go to Sharon Funch. Sharon, are you here? No. Ronald Dymick? Ronald, okay, you'll be up next. Thank you, ma'am, for your patience.
Hello, I'm Norma Martoff. I reside at 14102 West Hung Court, Bowie, 20715. I rise to speak against approval of the site plan as presented for numerous reasons. As a Bowie resident for thirty years, I have observed going from 197 over to the Bowie Health Center. It used to take about two minutes to get from my house at the, by the golf course, to the fifty exits. Now, it can take, if no traffic, maybe ten minutes. During rush hour, it can be forty-five. So, my point is, and I think it's been spoken to here tonight, the Bowie roads are already congested. This further development will only add to it. So, we've all agreed about the congestion. Until roads are developed, I would not approve or be in favor of any more development. Which brings me to an observation. When I was a teacher, and I did, was a teacher in Prince George's County for thirty-three point nine years, and I was all into the environment, I taught it, and John Neville, he was the supervisor for the environment, brought these aerial photographs, and he showed us Bowie, I'll say prior to nineteen sixty, somewhere along there. And it was just a beautiful aerial photograph of trees, all canopy. And then he showed us another aerial photograph of Bowie after the Levitt Homes and some development, and it was drastically, the canopy was drastically reduced. I just wonder if anybody had looked at any aerial photographs of Bowie recently? Because we should be concerned about the environmental impact, and I have not heard any particular results or findings of an environmental impact study. And I think that's important, so I'm kind of sorry that we didn't hear that. Also, I have a comment about Bowie High. I was on the education, Bowie Education Committee for twenty-three years, and we constantly heard speakers tell us how Bowie High was over one hundred percent capacity. So, tonight, someone presented a statement that it was maybe eighty-five, and I don't know how it got reduced from well over a hundred percent down to eighty-five, because we haven't had any new high schools, but anyway. I think this development would impact the schools. Further, I'll follow the presentations. I don't recall anyone who has presented evidence for the need of this development. Want perhaps at one time, but not a need. And I'm kind of curious about that, because Bowie is very well overdeveloped. Recent apartment buildings, the Melwood, and this goes on and on, so I don't know, I'm not clear. Is that time?
That is your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate your comments.
Thank you very much.
Ronald Dymick, followed by Monica Player. Monica, are you here?
Thank you so much.
No, then we will move on to...
Hello, my name is Ron Dymick.
Hang on one second, sir. I apologize to cut you off. I guess Cindy or Ed Manuel? Cindy or Ed Manuel, are you here? Cindy or Ed Manuel? Doreen Roberts, are you here?
Cindy is here.
Cindy is here, okay, thank you. Please speak up when I call your name. Mr. Dymick, sorry to cut you off, you have the floor, sir.
Okay. My name is Ron Dymick. I'm a resident of 307 Stony Brook Drive, Bowie, Maryland. My property is affected in that I live right between Superior Lane and Sage Lane. And you're right, Superior Lane is a very big problem, but one of the things people don't realize is, once the cars pass Superior Lane and get through that congestion, it turns into a speedway from Superior down to Stony Brook. I don't know how many times my car's almost been struck by cars flying down that road because of the congestion. Imagine if you add more cars having to slam on their brakes and then turn down into Sage Lane. You're going to just, I've seen so many possible accidents there, it's crazy. So, there is a safety issue there. Secondly, when we moved to Bowie thirty years ago, we left Laurel, which had apartments. We didn't want to be in an area with apartments. Now, to have apartments in our backyard, and they can actually see into our, you know, bedroom windows upstairs, it's crazy. We went, we bought into a community that was here and was established. Please don't change it. What I'm here for, basically, is to just plead that you listen to the citizens, the residents, the people who've been here and made their lives here. Don't change it. Don't ruin it. Just keep it the way it is. It's beautiful. Leave it alone. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Followed by Cindy Manuel will be Doreen Roberts. Doreen, are you here? All right. Cindy, you're...
I'm Cindy Manuel, and we live in the B section since nineteen eighty-four. As you're aware, we, most of the residents do not want these apartments here at all. I agree with the woman who said, "If I wanted to live among high-rises and frustrating congestion, I would have bought in DC." But I wanted to raise my family in the suburbs, where I felt there was an increased measure of safety. These apartments are definitely an aesthetic nightmare, and for the developer who wants them so badly, I would suggest build them behind your house. Part of the safety concerns involve the people who are going to live in those apartments. For the children who would inhabit those units, their backyard will be this parking lot behind them all, and if they're running and playing ball, and the big trucks are coming in to unload their wares, like the groceries at Harris Teeter, there's a lot of potential for disaster and harm to those kids. We already brought up crime, and we already brought up congestion, but to the person who's impressed with degrees and a traffic engineer, the developer's traffic report is very flawed. If you look at attachment eleven, page one, the notes, the average daily traffic volumes on four days in September, these traffic studies, if you're going to be fair, should be an entire week.
Your time. Is that three minutes, Mr. Minor?
No.
Yeah. Sorry, I didn't reset it. Okay. You may continue.
I knew.
I don't know about starting over, but you may continue.
Okay. So, the traffic volumes, I think it has to be a week, because if you cut it, if you do it Monday through Thursday, and all of us who work Monday through Thursday, guess what? We run our errands Friday through Sunday, and you're not showing all the congestion. We're trying to get over to Marketplace Mall and go to the dry cleaners and our groceries and our gasoline, and so I don't think it's a fair assessment unless you try to do it for a solid week. And the traffic count lines were picked up before Friday in the weekend, so I don't feel that they're accurate. Your construction vehicles that you put on here as a comparison is insubstantial to the amount of traffic that would be generated by the apartment residents and their visitors. Exhibit A two, there's a conflict, because the residents, it says a residential will not use Superior. You have three areas. Area's gone to Superior, out to Stony Brook and 450. What guarantee do you have that these residents aren't going to go out that way? They might have business going down 450.
Now, it's been three minutes to you.
Hmm?
Now, it's been three minutes. Thank you for your comments.
Okay.
We appreciate your time, Ms. Manuel. Doreen Roberts, you'll be next, followed by Linda Crandall. Linda, are you here? Okay. You'll be next, ma'am. Ms. Roberts, you have the floor.
Hi, my name's Doreen Roberts. I live at 12107 Maddox Lane. I have been a resident of Bowie for fifty-two years. I am one of five generations that live in Bowie. We own seven houses within one mile of each other. This is a very, very close community. We have never, as a family, opposed any development that we've done here in Bowie until now. Enough's enough, it's ridiculous. I recently received my motorcycle's license, and I tool through Bowie. I do not want an additional thousand cars to dodge during my weekend in Bowie, and it's dangerous enough out there as it is right now. I would like to speak to the points that the developer's attorneys mentioned at their closing, that they had an agreement with the city back in November of twenty fourteen. They did fail to mention that on page five, number six, section C, it clearly states that the city makes no representation as to the ability of the owner to develop the property as the owner intends. They additionally made reference to the Second Amendment on the zoning, where it also very clearly says that the developer's position was that this stipulation was at, I'm sorry, that's a different point, that the Bowie and the vicinity master plan still presides in this case. So, they're saying that we made agreements with them that they'd be able to do this, which is not the case. They've always said clearly that it still has to follow the rules and be approved and be agreed upon. As for zoning changes, it clearly states in the Prince George's County zoning laws that it has to be to the benefit of the citizens, and you can see by the representation here that the citizens do not see any benefit from this whatsoever. In closing, when I was a teenager in Bowie, we did not have a McDonald's. We did not have a McDonald's because they wanted the golden arches, and they were too tall. We still do not have tall, golden arches in Bowie. They did finally concede ten or fifteen years later and put in a McDonald's. But that was the citizens of Bowie holding steadfast to the aesthetics that they wanted in their town, and that's what we're doing here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Linda Crandall. I live on Brunswick Lane. I, the, many people who came here tonight didn't want any additional residence buildings built, and the developers would like to have three hundred residence buildings built, and what I'm going to propose is something that is, would probably be between forty and sixty, therefore, oh, I'm sorry. What I wanted to propose was something between forty and sixty, therefore, alienating pretty much everyone in the room. However, what I would like to see, and I admit I have a personal interest in this, is an assisted living facility, a medium-sized one. You wouldn't have to worry about a garage. My husband is currently at an assisted living facility in Severna Park, because that was the closest place that could take him. And they have, I think, fifty-nine or sixty residents, and they're only, I didn't think to count them until this got here, but it seems to me it's around twenty parking spaces. And anyway, also, you wouldn't have to worry about school systems, because the majority of people that use, not all, but most who use assisted living facilities are seniors, but there wouldn't be garages, like I said, with the parking spaces. And I'm not talking about assisted living, there are many in the neighborhood that you get one room per person, and the room is just that, and there's a bathroom down the hall that everybody uses, and there's one microwave in the kitchen, but I'm talking about the kind that, where he is, where in the room, there is a separate bathroom for the resident, there is a little kitchen area where you can have your own microwave oven and even a little, like, kitchen sink, little kitchen sink area, and that's the type of assisted living place I would very much like to see, and for personal reasons, I'd like to find one that actually would have something called a foyer lift. Many, we had to go quite a distance, because my husband's a double amputee, and the day before his first foot was amputated, his shoulder went out, and he is not, we have not, so he needs something called a foyer lift. And so, I would really, I would say, first of all, I am opposed to the three hundred apartment buildings, and I'm hoping that you will vote against it, but after you have, I am hoping that, I was told when I got here that it's already been brought up and that the developer has rejected the idea of assisted living, but I wish if you turned down the other idea that they would reconsider that idea. I don't think it would be that much of a disruption, because most of the people don't even drive their own cars. And I can tell you, the place in Lannan that we almost went to, as far as making a profit for a single person in a room, was about five or six thousand dollars a month. And if you have double occupancy in a room, I think you pay more than half that per person, so it would be even more. And, thank you.
Your time's up, Ms. Crandall. I appreciate your comments. Thank you. Kendall Davis. Kendall, are you here?
All right.
And we have one more after Kendall would be Pete Moskox, Moskosi? I might be butchering, and I apologize. Pete, are you here? Pete is not here. Mr. Davis, you'll be the last one.
First of all, thank you for this opportunity to speak. Thank you for the commerce in the area, the mall, the shopping center is great. One thing in regards to the traffic, I live on Sussex Lane. Sussex Lane is between Bel Air and Stony Brook Drive off of 450. In your traffic study, you didn't look at... In your traffic study, you didn't look at Sussex being a go-between street. So with the influx of traffic already, when 450 was widened up, Metro came down Sussex Lane. Metro has not been removed from Sussex Lane. So in regards during the school year, when you have the kids coming down and when you have people coming off Belair, timing the light for 450, they come down Sussex Lane. And I believe the speed limit should be like 25, 35 as a residential area, not the case. Usually when they hit the corner, when they're timing the lights, you hear nothing but engine. So with the increase in traffic, it would not be safe, you know, with Metro, it would not be safe to get in your car. It wouldn't be safe for kids getting out of school, walking down the street. I am against the apartment complex due to the traffic. It's a good idea to have it there, but I'm just against it because of the, it takes away from the aesthetics and just the speedway on Sussex Lane now. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. I appreciate your comments. At this time, that is everyone that has signed up. I would like to give an opportunity to anyone that did not sign up that wishes to speak, please raise your hand and come make a line right up front here. If you don't mind, please step up. I will ask you to cite your name and your address, please, and be mindful you have three. Be mindful you have three minutes, sir. Please start over. I didn't catch your name.
Well, number one, I don't think.
What was your name, sir?
Cecil Gentry.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. I don't think no one from this group over here lives in the type of houses we live in, number one, so they could come and push stuff down on us. I just, I don't know, but when the development came there with the stores, that was fine. Then all of a sudden I start seeing these signs saying apartment, Marketplace. I didn't know what they were talking about. And then it came to me clear and someone told me that they were going to build a large apartment. Now they said it got garages. Will they have any guests? I mean, they should have some friends come in once in a while, so what is that going to do to Superior? There's not a whole lot more I can say except I'm against this development.
Thank you, Mr. Gentry. Next up. Go ahead. Make sure you say your name and your address, please.
Yes, sir. My name's Bill Longwell. I live on Safety Turn. My wife spoke earlier regarding crime. I just want to talk a little bit about the parking. Your notice said that section 27568A of the county's ordinance requires 674 parking spaces available for a, an apartment unit of this size, whereas Mr. Berman is proposing 491. Actually, if you look at his own drawings, the number's 489. So he's 185 short, okay? Now, what does that mean? What does that, first of all, what does it mean for the merchants, okay? Right now, there are about 880 parking spaces available in Marketplace, front and back, okay? If this goes forward, the building itself is going to take away 295 of those spaces. Add together the expected overflow, assuming that the county's right and we have no reason to assume that they're not, if these 185 cars of overflow indeed materializes, that's a total of 480 spaces that are no longer going to be available for customers of the merchants in Bowie Marketplace. That's a reduction of 56% versus what they have now. The 56% less in 2019 and you've been, I know you've all been to the, to the new Marketplace. It's doing very well. All the stars aren't even in there yet and it's pretty busy. Now imagine if you reduce it by 56%. And I would, I would suggest to you ladies and gentlemen, it's probably, that's probably a best-case scenario because it doesn't take into account the fact that all of these people are going to have friends and relatives, they're going to drive cars over here to see them. Where are they going to park, okay? The, Mr. Berman's drawings, I believe, provide for a very limited amount of visitor parking, I think less than, less than 10 in the garage, okay? So it doesn't provide for that. For example, say some, say 10% of the people here throw a Super Bowl party and they each invite two people, that's 60 additional cars. Where are they going to go? They're going to go in the parking lot? I, you know, and, and the other thing this doesn't take into account is in the winter months, what happens when you have a snowfall? And you've got these 185 cars in there and then add on that the additional parking spaces that you're going to lose when they pile up snow. And those piles are going to be there maybe for weeks, depending on how heavy the snowfall is. That's going to be a real drain on the merchants, the very people that Mr. Berman has gotten to come here to open their business. And I would submit, the guy that's probably going to be hurt worse if this happens is Harris Teeter because his main competition is right across the street, right across 450. And people, if you drive in there and you can't find a space, where are you going to go? You're going to go right across the Giant and you may stay there permanently. Now, what if, what if all of those cars park on the street? How much time do I have left?
That would be your time, sir.
I, I'm out? Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Longwell. We appreciate your comments.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you, sir. Next up, please state your name and your address, please.
My name is Jade Stasoli. I live on Shelter Lane, which is not a direct impact street. My parents bought this home actually in the mid-'80s and totally unplanned, I wound up buying the house two years ago, which has actually worked out for reasons my father's cancer he's been going through. When I was younger growing up in Bowie, it was amazing. This is more obviously me speaking to the integrity of the city. It was great. I had friends, you know, all over, easy to get around, parents take wherever, whatever. As I got older, ugh, I hate Bowie, I want to leave. And I worked in DC, so I thought, okay, I'm going to leave, just like everybody my age wants to leave. I moved to Columbia. Horrible idea. I lived in an apartment there. Horrible idea. The amount of people alone, not just in my apartment complex, but in the surrounding area, it, just even getting into Columbia would take me like at least 45 minutes to get off the main road into my thing. And then by that point, time to go to sleep, wake up all over again. That was my own dumb choice. So ultimately, I come back to Bowie because why not? It was a great place to grow up. I know the city, I know the people, like many people have told you tonight, it's a small town. I worked in that crappy glory days. I worked in TJ Elliot's with Mr. Jimmy Marcos. I mean, I feel like I've been part of the community as well. And the fact now that we're trying to put something that does not fit in this community is really painful to the soul to so many of my friends that have moved back as well and are having children here. You know, this is just not anything that any of us want, as you can tell here tonight, as well as everything online, you know, people talking. So that's really what I wanted to drive home is that while it's a great idea in some places, it is not okay at the Marketplace. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Next up, please state your name and address, sir.
Good evening. My name is Sean Bennett. I live on Belair Drive. I've been there since 1998, but I've been in Bowie a little longer than that. I've raised two children there, me and my wife. And I have only three points to submit to you tonight. Won't regurgitate any of what's been said in relationship to the other issues. But my first point is you have a Bowie master plan. The Bowie master plan is in place for a reason. If you had felt, or the council had felt, that the Bowie master plan, although the council has submitted that it's 10 years old, if it didn't fit, if it wasn't relevant any longer based on changing times and changing conditions, then it could have been changed. And you would have been able to modify that. Second point, the applicant suggested that the multifamily dwelling was already in the plan from the beginning and that why change it midstream now and have some unfair adjustment that would adversely affect the applicant? To that, I would say, if you want to be a good community steward, if you want to consider your impact, and by all accounts, Berman has been a good steward to Bowie, if you want to continue that and foster, continue to foster a sense of community, a sense of keeping the aesthetic of Bowie the way it should be or the way it has been, then I would urge to rethink the multifamily units. I would urge this body to disapprove the plan based on the many number of reasons that have already been stated. And with that, I'll, I'll close. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Appreciate it. Next up, please state your name and address.
My name is Medio Chicalini. I've lived in Bowie over 60 years. I watched the community change and grow in different ways. I watched the shopping center here come and go. And as I look at it today, it's probably one of the nicest shopping centers we've had in the area regardless of, since its beginning of time. I mean, it's a beautiful place. In regards to the builders, part of their plan was to put in the apartments. I think we have to give them some consideration for all the money they put in and for the time that they put in in developing a beautiful shopping center that we have. I'm so tired of looking at the old Safeway and the old shopping center for the last 15 years. It's what a beautiful improvement it's been. So I think we have to give them some credit and maybe some help, maybe not what they have in plan, but something to make it work. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next up, please state your name and address, please.
I'm Vivian Smith and we've lived in, we live in the K section on Kavanaugh Lane, so it really doesn't affect the Stonybrook area.
Talk into the mic, please.
But it affects our home. It affects our town. Our daughter did live in Bowen Apartments, the luxury apartments over by Town Center for a year. Beautiful apartments, luxury apartments. They're small, but they're beautiful. And criminal background check and everything that was needed that we thought gated community that would be safe for her and her children through a very ugly divorce. And by the time her lease was coming up, they were having meetings, they were calling meetings about the cars being broken into and apartments that were being broken into, including a police officer's apartment. This was a year ago. I don't know if they've resolved those issues. At that point, my daughter decided not to renew her lease and she now lives in a townhouse in Crafton. So despite the fact that these are gorgeous apartments, it, it does attract attention to, to crime. And then it just changes our community. We had a, we had a clubber, not a clubber, good grief, a Cape Cod. And, and as we had our children and we raised the children, we had five children and we had to buy a Colonial. We outgrew the Cape Cod. We love Bowie. We want it to stay the same. We love the, the shopping center, what it is, mister, sir? But when is enough enough? Why isn't turn, changing it into a beautiful shopping center and, and bringing in the revenue? Why do we need so many more? What, it's just, the glass is, is full and now it's overflowing and the community is saying enough is enough. We don't need that. We don't need that extra. So thanks for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Come on up, sir. State your name and address, please.
Rick Smith. I live on Kavanaugh Lane. That was my wife.
That's what I figured.
But one thing I do, did note, I am against this 100%, but the thing is, is if any of you have time to go over to the Bowie Health Center at night or on the weekends, the Bowen there, that street is lined up with cars parked there because they don't have the parking in the Boeing or Harmony Place thing. And that whole street is lined up and they even have to have no parking signs just for the bus to get in and out. And, you know, yeah, they have, they're reducing everything down, but they're spreading it out to give the problems to everybody else. And if you, if you go, have the time to go over there and look, you'll see that. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Come on up, sir. State your name and address, please.
My name is Walter Knastemberger. I live here in Bowie in the M section, 27 years. I have participated in the development of the sustainability plan for Bowie and I would like to think of this as a part of the larger sustainability concept. The multifamily housing concept for that particular location is not the right thing. What I believe do, we do need to look at in this community is affordable housing and senior housing and that sort of thing. And the connectivity between these particular parts of the town, that is part of a larger, larger plan and this particular community, this particular development is not what's needed in that particular location. But it is something we should be thinking of in a larger context. There are many other shopping centers around, not only in PG County, but in neighboring counties and so forth. Ultimately, the economy will not necessarily support all that. We have to think about other concepts for being creative in this community. Sustainability, the sustainability plan has a lot of very interesting concept in it. And in 10, 15 years, self-drive cars will be common and the cars themselves will be fewer in number and needed. So let's think creatively, but I think this particular development there in the new town center is, is not the right one. Anyway, that's enough.
Thank you, sir, for your comments. Appreciate your time. Last call. Anyone else? Going once, going twice. At this time, we will close the public speaking session. At this time, would you like to provide a rebuttal, sir?
Back on the record, Andre Gingleson. I'm not going to go point by point, but just make a few points. And first of all, thank this board. I sit on boards and every now and then I have to sit through a meeting where the community is allowed to come out. I do think that, and I thank everyone who came out and I thank those who've participated with us throughout the stakeholder process, but I know it's very difficult to sit and try and weigh and balance the various issues and criteria. And so we all, I think, join in and thank you for that service. So I've been doing this for a long time and at almost every development hearing, I have to address the issue of those who have been in the county at least as long, if not longer than I, and the changes that have occurred in the county and particular communities over that period of time. So I've been here 30-plus years. I live up in Laurel and when I'm up in Laurel, I hear a lot of the same things, particularly for my development projects that are in the Laurel area. But that's what's going on here, that's what's going on everywhere else. Traffic is a, is an issue that occurs as a result of background growth from everything that's occurring, traffic going throughout communities and development. And so I would never, and I'm always careful not to tell anyone in the community in which they live that they don't have a traffic problem. What we essentially try to do is work by the rules that we are given. Those rules require us to develop a traffic analysis verse, premise on certain data. And it's not always, and there are anecdotal data that come from people that live in communities. And so when you come to these hearings, you hear that. But we still have a requirement that's established by the county and, and in part in this instance, established by your city, but also established by the Institute of Traffic Engineers in terms of how we do those studies. And they result in specific findings and that's what we've presented to you tonight. The, what's sort of occurred here, and the only other anecdotal thing that I maybe want to speak about is that multifamily development, particularly over the last few years, in this county, almost all multifamily development dating back in the '70s regarding apartments. There's been an effort to move us to better quality apartments and part of better quality apartments is apartments with garage parking, with restricted access. I know that there are view, there are different views on this, but in fact, that's what the design guidelines would have us do at this particular location, develop a multifamily project that would have garage parking. Are there issues associated with that in terms of crime? Yes, but that Yes, but that gets handled by an operator that handles, gets handled by restrictive access. And, and one of the things that we've done in this building, particularly to address the parking problem as well as the crime problem, is to move to a very centralized location. And essentially to negate someone's desire to park other than in the garage or to the front or side of the property, because the only way to really access the building is to come around toward the front. So the, the two other points I just want to make is, and I would just take you back again to the development agreement, and particularly with regard to the conceptual site plan. The conceptual site plan, we have indicated to staff prior to the filing, and we did go ahead and file it because staff asked us to file it. But you have a development agreement that is very clear in section four C, that first we have to be consistent with the zoning ordinance. And the zoning ordinance that was changed with the acquiescence of the city required to approval of a detailed site plan. And then sections twelve A and twelve B do not require a CSP. It tells us that if a CSP is filed and approved, then development needs to be consistent with it, but it does not require a CSP. Lastly, one of the things that you have to weigh heavily, and why I don't want to sit in your position, is you, you have to take in a lot of community input, and you have to try and balance that with the laws that we are required to adhere to in the filing of an application. And so there's various statutes that govern what are the specific criteria for the approval of preliminary plan subdivision and for the approval of a detailed site plan. We think that we've showed you that criteria. The interpretation of your statute about the recommendation with regard to the traffic, we believe that it could be recommended, but notwithstanding that, it is only the recommendation. This board is not necessarily bound by it, and we would just, again, emphasize that the level of service requirements that we have to adhere to for the preliminary plan, which actually ultimately is approved by the planning commission, is a level of service that we have met, and, and your staff also concurs that that level of service is met. With regard to the detailed site plan, what we're required to show is that we provide a reasonable alternative for satisfaction of the site design guidelines. Those site design guidelines mimic what was agreed to with the developer and the city in terms of the econ, the development agreement. And so we, we think what we've proposed, including the modifications that we've done as a result of our stakeholder meetings, would satisfy those site design guidelines. With that, again, we appreciate all of your patience this evening, and would ask that you give consideration to approving the preliminary plan of subdivision application, and we would ask that those conditions be modified, consistent with, and I'm not sure of the exhibit number, but the exhibit that I did put into the record, and also ask that you approve the detailed site plan application as well.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Minor?
Thank you, and I did want to pass out to the board the conditions that Mr. Gingles has referenced, and then I wanted to rebut a couple of the points.
Mm-hmm.
I was carefully taking notes when Mr. Gingles was giving his direct presentation to you, and I did want to clarify a couple of items. First of which is the, regarding what the development agreement says about the conceptual site plan and whether it's required or not required. It's our position that if you look at attachment five, which is the development agreement, paragraph twelve A, it does say in the last sentence of that paragraph, "The owner shall not construct any residential improvements on the property unless based upon a CSP approved by the city pursuant to this paragraph." So we feel, our position is that the expectation going into this agreement was that there would be a CSP approved by the city. Second point was regarding the fact that the presentations made by the developer over past years have included a diagram showing residential development on the back part of the property, and we don't dispute that. But there was never any real talk about the number of dwelling units, no discussion about the residential characteristics of that area. Pretty much was shown as a future, something to be considered down the road. We never discussed any specific numbers of dwelling units. The only time staff became aware of the actual number of dwelling units that were being proposed was when the, we held the stakeholders' meeting in March and April, at which the plans were shown. We didn't even have the plans in our office. We received the plans for the first time in September. So that was the first time we could actually take a position regarding the, the density issue and, and the, and the other characteristics of the site. The third point, Mr. Gingles had talked about density, and that the text amendment that was approved, CB sixty, two thousand and fifteen, does not have any density limits. But yet, when they made the request to the city, they specifically said in the letter that they would provide medium-density development in accordance with the master plan. And the city, in its response to the, to the county, when we, when we took a position, and this is attachment seven, attachment eight of the staff report, the letter that the city, city council sent to the county specifically said medium-density, reflecting what we were told by Berman Enterprises in their letter. So if you look at attachment seven and eight, we think that's covered. Mr. Gingles made a point of saying that the purposes of the zoning ordinance with regard to conceptual site plans, purposes are not necessarily a criterion for approval, and we would agree with that. But there are other factors cited in our report that go well beyond the purposes. Purposes were just one factor in making our decision regarding the CSP. Regarding the point that was made about the policy change, when the city council approved, allegedly approved, the development agreement, that that has updated their policy and has somehow negated all of their master plan input from ten years ago, we simply just don't agree with that. The master plan recommendations still stand, and until the plan is updated, that would be the council's position as we see it. Regarding the density question and how density is calculated, Mr. Gingles went on to talk about floor area ratio using the point four and the up to eight point oh. Floor area ratio is, is a way or method of calculating intensity on a property based on square footage. How much of the square footage covers how much of the land? We point out in our staff report on page fourteen that that's not the way it's done if you're calculating density on a piece of property. You look at the acreage that's concerned. This is not a mixed-use zone. As we know, it's CSC. It was not zoned to a mixed-use zone. If it was, you could use that approach, but it's not. So we think that this whole argument is a distraction and takes you away from the, the correct way of calculating the density. And then the final issue was regarding whether or not the wording of the city code, as it affects traffic on city streets, whether those levels of service that we talked about earlier, whether that even applies here because of the way that you could, you could, someone could read the text of the code. And we're gonna have to have our attorney look at that, that issue, but it's our belief that, that there was the intent to address development, even if the roads were already failing, that the developer would have some role in trying to reconcile the problems that we have. So that would be my response to the, the items that I had heard earlier. On one of the comments from the public regarding the capacity of Bowie High School, we did use the numbers, the two thousand and fifteen enrollment numbers that I mentioned, and that's where the percentage came from. So I, I checked that, but I will go back and double-check it. And then finally, I wanted to reference the conditions that Mr. Gingles has proposed, and I don't know if it's, if it's appropriate to have him describe those changes, but I guess I would, I would only recommend, in terms of looking at what's proposed here, the items in red are proposed to be deleted, the items in green are proposed to be added. And I did want to make the clarification when I presented earlier, and I forgot to do it, that in terms of our staff condition one on the preliminary plan, that really it was an error to reference the entire twenty-acre marketplace property, because we're only talking about the development levels related to parcel X twelve, which is what's in the preliminary plan. So that was an error in our staff report, but the cap, trip cap figures of two hundred and forty-three AM and five hundred and thirty-three PM trips are still relevant to parcel X twelve. So staff would agree with the change that Mr. Gingles is proposing in, in item number one. And I, sorry I failed to cover that earlier. Regarding the other changes, I, I don't think that they're something that, that I would support, especially the deletion of item F, which says a transition in building density and intensity from more intense uses located at the, along Route four fifty to less intense uses along the edge adjacent to the residential neighborhood. We certainly don't believe that should be deleted. And I think the other changes are not really that, something that we would support at this, at this stage. So I, I would, in terms of our recommendation, we would only support the change to item number one. So that would be my comments. Thank you, Ms. Truman.
Thank you, Mr. Minor. At this time, I'd like to move into deliberations with the advisory planning board in closing the public hearing at this time. Do we have any comments from anyone on the board? Mr. Rogers?
Mr. Berman, development is hard. Development is a very difficult thing because it's rare that you will come up with a product that I think that everybody's gonna be happy with. There're gonna be some great benefits, and there's gonna be some gnashing of the teeth. And I do applaud all of the efforts in, in terms of turning around Marketplace, because that's been a very well-received and beneficial addition to the Bowie community, both from an economic standpoint, raising of property values, and all of the benefits that it brings with it. And having listened intently to some of the things that have been said here this evening, I do believe that there could have been better communication with the community in terms of agreements that were being made regarding the residential component of the property, because it seems as though not everybody here was, was well-aware or made aware of all of the, some of the more important details. So I, in that vein, I do hear the community's angst in that, yeah, it's, it's something that would cause pain and concern to them to have dense development right there in their neighborhood. So I don't know how that can be resolved, but based upon that, I just, you know, wait till we, you know, prepare to take our vote, but I do want to applaud the work that has been done, because through all of this, I don't want that to be lost, that that's the type of development that the, the community needs, has needed for a long time, and I'm glad that it's here.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers. Ms. Avery?
Yeah, I wanted to comment as well that I agree with Mr. Rogers. It is a hard decision, because we do have this beautiful shopping center, and Mr. Berman invested in our community, and then now we're saying, you know, we only want one part. So, you know, it is, it's just a very difficult decision for me to, to make.
Thank you, Ms. Avery. Anybody else have comments? Ms. Trass?
Um, I, I guess I, I really appreciate the citizen participation in this hearing today. It's, it's been very refreshing. Usually, we're sitting up here by ourselves, and it's, it's a little lonely. So this has been very refreshing. But I was struck by one of the comments made by the citizens that the need for this, this particular development had not been identified. I've, I've looked through the entire package, and I don't see where a need for this type of residential housing was identified. So, you know, that was just something that, that struck me.
Thank you, Ms. Trass. Anyone else? Mr. Galado?
First of all, yes. You did a wonderful job with the shopping center, and we desperately needed that. It was a mess. You've done something. The community appreciates it. You have goodwill in the community. Don't ruin the goodwill. I understand why you want the apartments, because shopping centers like this in rural areas don't get the traffic that they do in more trafficked areas, and you want some support for your shopping center. Agreed. But two hundred and eighty-eight units is just utterly ridiculous for this kind of area. I think apartments are fine, but let's come up with a better design, fewer apartments, and apartments that will not block the views of people behind them. So I think we can work with something, just give us something better.
Thank you, Mr. Galado. Anyone else? Ms. Avery?
I have one other comment, and it was regarding the crime. And I was just wondering if Mr. Berman had bothered to maybe check, like, the uniform crime reporting that the FBI provides, just to see if, in fact, a parking garage does attract crime, because there were a lot of comments on that. But they actually offer a reporting that will, you know, give you statistics of whether or not that actually is a legitimate concern.
Thank you, Ms. Avery. Mr. Schoetz?
I wasn't gonna say anything, but, you know, I think you guys heard thirty-two to two is my count tonight. Obviously, the community is sending a message to you guys. Like I said earlier, knowing the type of quality people and organization the Berman Enterprises and Berman family represent, I would hope that they've heard the message loud and clear. You know, with regards to the parking, it kind of behooves me a little bit, you know? It's, it's great that you guys are reducing the parking, but the last time I saw to create, when you build a parking garage, it's at least in the neighborhood of about twelve, twelve thousand dollars to twenty thousand dollars, depending on the area. It's a lot of money, you know? And, you know, to, to put that much money in capital cost to derive back the benefits of, of the multifamily dwellings that you're utilizing, again, it's a business decision. But, you know, I said earlier, and I, I really stand pat on what I was saying, that if we are going to have multifamily type of units there, I really would like to see something come across that addresses the need for senior housing. You know, again, just the benefits of it, and the fact, too, is that nothing really exists like that in this community yet. You know, I'm, I don't know if you guys did a needs assessment or marketing study or anything like that, but there's just nothing like this around. And you have to go up to, you have to go up into Anarondale County and other jurisdictions, and that's where our seniors are going. The wealth is leaving Bowie. The economic benefit is leaving Bowie. So I ask you guys, please, to consider many things that were said here tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Schoetz.
I would just like to piggyback on that. The citizens, we really can't complain about the blight and the way Marketplace was. Mr. Berman and his group came in and done a heck of a job, and I, my, my family and I have shopped at every store in that mall already. So, I mean, I appreciate it personally for what you've done there. Before it was there, we would maybe have to go up the street, as Mr. Schoetz was saying, to Anarondale.
to Anarondal County and Crofton, as they do for a multitude of other reasons. You know, people leave the Bowie area to go to Crofton. Senior housing is something I would encourage you to look at. I think there's a market for it here in Bowie. I think you would thrive in that. In that way, we'll keep Bowie seniors in Bowie instead of going up to Crofton. But I do appreciate what you've done with Marketplace, so thank you very much. And at that point, anybody else have any other deliberations? If not, I will entertain a motion, please.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to pass the motion, please.
Mr. Bird?
Okay, Mr. Chair, I would like to motion to agree with staff's recommendation of disapproval of the proposed conceptual site plan and subsequent detailed site plan and preliminary plan docket number 16, tag 02, as per but not limited to the following reasons. Number one, the CSP does not conform to the intent, guidance, and direction as set forth in the 2006 City of Bowie Master Plan. The proposal indicates that the development will increase the dwelling-to-acre ratio to an unacceptable level, and this is not in compliance with the gradual land use development that was mentioned by one of our presenters earlier, one of the, our public presenters. And this is really in regards to density levels. Number two, the proposal as depicted will have a drastic impact upon the current traffic density within the immediate area and indirectly on surrounding area traffic. This area currently is operating at above-average levels in relationship to service levels. So currently, it's operating below the optimum service level of Level C. As stated, the traffic service level, like I said, is already bad. Therefore, adding potentially more traffic will have an insignificant impact, as was stated by the applicant. I believe this is an unacceptable answer. We respect counsel as well as the Berman Enterprises, but the 2006 Master Plan is our current directive now. And it believes, believes, or excuse me, sentiments have been made that perhaps that the current doctrine is outdated and irrelevant. Little we cannot comply with that. Loose interpretation or situation shaping should not be condoned. Number three, the proposal does not meet zoning ordinances in relationship to adequate parking. An insufficient amount of parking will invariably lead to apartment unit residents parking their vehicles in surrounding neighborhoods and increasing their flows as well. And number four, the proposal does not conform to the current city code or zoning ordinances of the area which is detailed in the city's Master Plan of 2006. Of specific note, the proposed development aesthetically does not conform to the area character and the existing neighborhood structure.
Thank you, Mr. Bird. Do I have a second?
I second the motion.
Second by Mr. Galado. All those in favor of the recommendation, say aye.
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 Those that oppose? Hearing none? The ayes have it. Thank you. We'll move on to the next item on the docket, is item B, which is BD-116. Mr. Minor?
Thank you, Chairman. Did you, would you like to read the normal statement that you would at the, preface the case?
Yes, I'm sorry. Correct. Right. At this time, the proposed application is a request to vary the requirements of the Prince George's County zoning ordinance. Each person wishing to speak at the hearing will be given an opportunity to address the board. The recommendation of the advisory planning board, taken at this hearing, will be filed with the city council, who will make the final decision. Any person of record may appeal the decision of the advisory planning board to the city council within 15 days after notice of this board's recommendation. The hearing tonight will involve a presentation by city staff, followed by a presentation by the applicant. Board members will have an opportunity to ask questions of staff and the applicant following their presentations. The board will also have an opportunity to ask questions of those who spoke during the hearing. Board members will then be polled for their comments, if any, prior to a motion. Is there anyone here now that would like to testify on this application? If so, please stand and raise your right hand. Yes, sir.
I may just approach. We'd like to withdraw the DPLS and the DDS application at this time.
Mr. Minor?
DDS, DDS, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, what did you need from?
He wants to withdraw the application for?
DPLS and DDS.
That's their prerogative to withdraw, so the case is withdrawn and does not need to be heard.
Then it is withdrawn.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your time. Well, that just made our night a little bit shorter. If there's no other items on the agenda, do I have a, anybody want a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
So moved by Ms. Trass?
Second.
And second by Ms. Schoetz. Thank you, everybody. You have a good night.